Ellen, would you please call roll?
I'm Mayor Pilon.
Present.
Councilmember Alders.
He's in the parking lot.
Okay, Councilmember Blake.
Here.
Councilmember Rainbird.
Here.
Councilmember Rainville.
Present.
Uh, Commander Heath. Uh, City Planner Duckman.
Here.
Assistant Chief, Fire Chief Joe Lawrence.
Here.
Thank you. Uh, we have an agenda that we're following along here. There's a copy of it in the back, and there should be a copy of everything we're looking at. Up here, there's one copy in the back if you want to see what we're looking at. Um, we do have an opportunity for floor items. So if you'd like to speak at the floor items, we'll give you three minutes. That will be the second thing on our agenda. Please, please come up to the microphone and podium and announce yourself, and then when you're recognized by me, you can speak your three minutes. All right? Take a motion to amend or approve tonight's agenda.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Blake.
I'd like to put down for the good of the council that we talk about the communication meeting for council and staff that we've been talking about, that we might be able to set a date for that under for the good of the council.
And Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I'm wondering if the council has any objections to moving items B, excuse me, A and B under engineering to the consent agenda. They're pretty self-explanatory. It's a release of funds for Brian Bend letter of credit, and the Rogers Lake gets an update.
Where are you moving it?
To consent.
Okay.
And then I have an addition.
Council okay with that?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. And then I have an addition to the consent agenda, and there is a copy in the back, and it deals with my request for reimbursement for the refrigerator, its delivery, and the tables for Northern Park Pavilion to go under consent, and it's explained out in the request.
Do you want that under the consent?
Yes, please.
All right. Any other amendments? Uh, I should note that under item five, the financials, Bruce Kimmel was not able to be here tonight, got called away for an emergency, and is asked that we call him and bring him in by phone so he can go through the packet because that information doesn't need to be moved on so we can keep the project moving forward. Uh, there are some questions I know we'll have on that, so I think it's important to get that discussed tonight. Anything else? The amendments. Saying and hearing none, I will take motion to approve the amended agenda as presented.
I second it.
Are you going to move it first?
Oh, get him. I thought he just moved it.
I'm accepting a motion.
Go ahead, Mayor, you move it.
I would move it as amended.
Now I second it.
All right. In the consent agenda, we're looking at approving city council meeting minutes from May 24th, uh, June 8th, and June 15th. Financial reports, Treasury reports and claims dated July 7th, 2021 through August 3rd, 2021. Ramsey Lion's application and permit for a one to four day temporary on sale liquor license, a resolution authorizing acceptance of a donation from B&amp;L Custom Finishing and Lakeside Cabinets for woodworking in our new fire station addition, uh, the RCA for the park refrigerators and tables, and then the RCA letter of credit reduction for Brian's Bend and Rogers Lake area improvement updates, which the council has seen. So those are all on the consent agenda. I do have one note, a couple of notes on the meeting minutes, on the meeting from June 8th. On the last page, we picked up a new council member. Uh, in the second paragraph, we have Councilmember Greenville. We have to fix that one. And then on the minutes for the Northern City Council dated May 24th, that actually is minutes for two assessment, road assessment hearings, and a special council meeting. And that should be noted because if somebody's looking through that, they're going to, uh, to miss the fact that there's actually three sets of meeting minutes in there. That's May 24th, and it's two assessment hearings and a special council meeting in that packet. Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Greenville.
There was a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Did we vote on that?
Yes.
Was this part of that discussion?
No, we voted to. Oh, there's no. Okay, I'm sorry. Um, so the motion to approve the amended agenda, motion by Councilmember Rainville, second by Councilmember Blake. All those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll move on to consent agenda. So with the consent agenda as presented, with those corrections to the minutes, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended with the changes in the meeting minutes.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I would second that.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Floor items. Do we have any floor items on our list here?
Yes.
Thank you. Dave Johnson, would you step to the podium, please? And is that microphone on?
Well, I'm just here stating my opposition to the proposed rezoning on 181st and Boss Street.
First, would you please state your name and your address for our records?
Oh, 8863 184th Avenue Northwest.
And your name is Dave Johnson.
Correct. I was just a couple of years ago, went through the planning and zone. It was in the new comp plan, it was stayed zone ag residential. Most of the neighborhood is against it, and here we are again all of a sudden. And we don't understand why, I guess.
Thank you. Rome Linder. Linder?
Rome Linder, 184th Avenue Northwest. Um, I'm here for the same reason Dave Johnson was, is here. Uh, I oppose the, uh, the 181st and Boss Street rezoning.
Thank you. Dick Wallstrom?
Hi, I'm Dick Wallstrom. I live on, uh, 20390 Basalt. And I'm here, uh, I, I don't really know what I expect out of the meeting. But we have an issue on Basalt with traffic and speeding. The traffic you can put up with, but we've got people, especially that come from the north side, they come over the hill by the old Skoquist farm up there, and they're doing 50, 60 miles an hour easy. We've got six driveways on each side between the top of the hill and 204th. Couple of them have now got little kids again living there. Uh, someone's going to get killed. I don't know. We haven't been able to find out what the speed limit is even. Uh, if it's 55, like some people say, it's 50 on Old Viking, and that's paved. This is a tar road. There's no shoulders. People ride horses out there. Uh, we have some people with, uh, people in wheelchairs. We have, uh, a lot of people on ATVs and things like that that use the road. Quite frankly, uh, if you're walking up that road and somebody comes hauling over that hill, you've got no place to go. If you go for the ditch, you're going to be in the ditch, and it's deep. And, uh, it's not good. So I don't know what we can do about it. Uh, we've got the sheriff here. If he wants to park his rig in my driveway and set up a radar, God bless him. Uh, but at any rate, we need to do something before, or else we're going to end up burying somebody. Thank you.
I hear you. Appreciate that. Commander, you've taken note? And we have Clayton Conley.
Clayton Conley, 9030 184th Avenue Northwest. Uh, we were here, uh, as basically a neighborhood, uh, four years ago for those council members that weren't here, um, then. And I don't know what to expect of this meeting either, but from my wife, who does the social media, uh, which I don't, she had mentioned planning and zoning, had started up the conversation again about the rezoning for the area of 181st and Ball for our area, for the possibility of a Bills, Gee Will Liquor, that type of thing, again, as it was addressed four years ago. And I think, uh, that four years ago, those council members that are present, um, are aware that those in the southwest area are adamantly against any rezoning business district related. That doesn't go in line with the comprehensive plan as it was laid out. A lot of us, or at least I can speak for myself, based moving to Nowland, based on that comprehensive study. And, I mean, I've got two kids. I've got one that's heart of hearing, and so I also have kind of done some of the legwork of taking decibel readings, which technology and me don't really get along, but I have it available, that I've taken decibel readings of that intersection, as well as intersections at Bills and Bills at 22 and 9. And just, I would offer that if the council would like, I could, you know, send that to you. Just, uh, another piece of information to what it is, because I also, many times, I mean, I love Bill Suparet. I will give him credit that, uh, Mr. Adam Ocker runs a very clean business, and the employees are very well respected. Uh, we give him business. We just don't need another one. And Nowland, as far as I'm concerned, that changes from the original comprehensive plan and forces us to rezone, because there's plenty of places to get gas or food or what have you. I understand population houses are increasing and what have you, but we all move in the southwest area. It's a horse community, five acres, it's trails, kind of what the other gentleman was talking about with the Basalt. Uh, we don't want that concern. And for the Sheriff's Department, that we have one contract car, I mean, I have experience from Brooklyn Park, that you put a standalone gas station and liquor store in a residential neighborhood, and you're not, you're going to have nothing but problems and more increase in criminal activity. And, I mean, I don't think they're ready for that, to be honest. I mean, I had one, one incident here not too long ago where it just, it was a suspicious person, suspicious car, and it was 20 minutes to get a squat to the location. And it was an out of state plate. And to actually get with the vehicle, which ironically, it wasn't an Anoka County deputy that actually ultimately found the vehicle. It was a Ramsey officer that had absolutely no idea what was going on. I flagged down, and they were able to affect the traffic stop. And the dispatcher's first comments, "Don't follow, let it go." Well, I can speak from experience. No, it's my neighborhood. It's a suspicious vehicle.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, and take them into consideration. And that is it on the floor items. Move on to the sheriff's report. We'll apologize for Commander Heath ahead of time. He's been checked. He is safe. He just has a gravelly voice this evening.
Yeah, so bear, bear with me, please, but I don't think you have to worry about me. Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, just to let the council know, I will follow up on the complaint about the, about the speeding on Basalt and, and request our patrol division do extra patrol there. And if there's anything, anytime there's going, if it's happening, if you get a vehicle description, let us know. Or if you know where the vehicles are coming from, we can take some more action inside of help, um, stop.
Do you know what the speed limit is on Basalt?
If it's a rural, if it's a rural road, it's not posted, it would be 55 miles an hour. So that's the, uh, that's what the current state law is. So. With that said, just a brief overview for the, uh, the month of July of 2021. During the month, deputies responded to 138 calls for service in the city, um, wanted to report to the council. Nine of those were to bar none. Uh, four of those nine calls were runaway juveniles. There were two assaults, a medical call, and a found property call. So just in, as far as that goes, they're still having some issues with, uh, the youngsters staying on the property there as well. And just to, a couple, point out a couple of proactive incidents where deputies were on routine patrol and found incidents. Uh, one of them was on, uh, the second, deputy was on routine patrol and, uh, observed the motorcycle traveling after sunset without a headlight on. The deputy stopped the, uh, motorcyclist, and the driver showed signs of being impaired. Uh, they ultimately were given field sobriety tests, which they failed, and were arrested. Um, and there's, you know, a couple other incidents throughout the month that show that. And, and the question has been asked sometimes, what, what do the deputies do when they're not on calls? And it's, it's out looking for those proactive things and, and working in the neighborhoods where we're having problems with speeding, or if we have a house that's causing particular problems in the city, working in that area to try to address those issues for the rest of the residents that are, that are in the area, to try to keep those issues from spreading elsewhere. Um, and just to follow up as far as, uh, on some of the other calls for service, you know, we've talked about some of the increase in, in activity in the city. And sometimes Nowland, and, and Assistant Chief Lawrence, uh, can attest to this, Nowland is becoming a busier city, that the calls for service are increasing, and sometimes the, the quantity of calls during a day, we might have a day where there aren't many calls in the city, but then comparatively for this city, we might have a day where we're, we're facing 10 different calls. Uh, and on one day in particular, on the 31st of the month, we had two personal injury crashes in the city. Uh, one of them was on Cleary, Cleary Road, where a passerby found a motorcyclist that had, by all accounts, it looks like the motorcyclist just drove off the, drove off the curb and was injured. Law enforcement and fire and EMS responded and, and assisted the victim, and they were transported to the hospital. And then on that same day, later in the afternoon, um, again, law enforcement, fire, and EMS responded to a crash in the 6200 block of Viking Boulevard. Um, that was another single vehicle crash, and, and three occupants of the vehicle were injured in that crash. Uh, one was airlifted to HCMC, and two were transported by ground ambulance to Mercy Hospital. Um, so there's, there's days when the activity in town is, is very busy, and it keeps fire and law enforcement, uh, um, hopping for the, for the staffing that we have. And I just point those out to the council, just so everybody understands, some days, it's, it, from all intents and purposes, you look from the outside in, it looks like a sleepy town. If you drive through once, you might not notice, but, uh, sometimes the days do get, get busy for the relative size of the community and things like that. And then even some of the.
Hey, Commander, on those, where you had to have the two ambulances come? What is our response time typically these days?
I don't track the ambulance response times.
You know.
As far as what the state averages are, the chief might be able to assist.
Mayor and council, on both events, uh, fire beat the ambulances to the calls, so I would estimate ambulance arrival sometime in that 15, 20 minute mark.
And we had to, uh, we got ambulance from Elk River on that, if I understood right?
Mayor and council, that is correct. The two, uh, that were transported were by Elk River Fire, our Elk River's EMS ambulance. Um, there was an Alina ambulance unseen, uh, just to kind of clarify, uh, they had moved two patient, or the, the most critical patient was in the Alina ambulance, but the decision was made to send them by helicopter. The other two patients had already been located to the Elk River truck. So, uh, that left the Alina truck empty. So, uh, the two were transported by ground by Elk River, one by air, which was lifelink.
I didn't need to interrupt you with this.
No.
That's one of the things we're trying to keep track of is, is, as we make decisions going forward, what, what kind of coverage and response we need to have out here.
No, and those are just a snapshot of some of the things that went on over the month. Um, if the council has any other questions, I'd be glad to answer.
So on, on that day when we had those personal injury accidents, we also had a couple of fires, I think. Uh, one was up in Bethel, I guess, but I saw the trucks heading south. And when we have fires, is the sheriff responding to those as well?
Generally, depending on the nature of the fire, but in most circumstances, yes. And a lot of it depends on, again, the nature, whether there's any type of personal injury potential, if there's, if it's a structure fire and people aren't out, or there's other things that fire may need our assistance with, that we can help out, so they can have the firefighters do actual firefighting work. Like, if we need to notify nearby residents, we take care of that. Or if we can get there and, and kind of scout out and secure things so they can just roll in and, and go to work right away, we try to do that, and it helps them concentrate on their job.
And I assume traffic control is part of that.
And, and a lot of times, that's a shared, uh, that's a, a shared thing we do, depending on how many resources the, each of us has to, to dedicate to the incident, depending on what it is.
Anything else? Council, anything for the sheriff? And we're working on rescheduling our, our work session?
Yes, and I'm glad you brought that up. I apologize. That was actually, one of the things I wanted to say first is that Sheriff Stewart sends his regrets. He's been out ill and, uh, uh, was not able to attend that meeting. So I am working with the secretary to get it rescheduled, and I will, I will work with the city and, and get that scheduled for you all, so we can get it on the books soon.
Thank you. Anything from the council? Thank you very much, Commander. Fire Department.
Mayor and council, uh, tonight we have RCA before you in regards to one of the firefighters that tested positive for COVID. Uh, what I will tell you is coming from St. Francis, when somebody was put on quarantine regardless of their positive or negative testing status, they were issued, uh, in an, I might goof up the order, but, uh, in some way, shape or form, $75 for the first, uh, two weeks that they are out, and then $150, uh, the additional two weeks, should they have required any further quarantine. We didn't have anything in place. I don't believe, uh, the city of Nowland had experienced any essential workers, uh, especially without having a fire department and contracting, uh, police services through the sheriff's office. Uh, but the state of Minnesota, early in the pandemic, declared all, uh, essential workers who were found to test positive for COVID or have to deal with quarantine stuff, to be covered as if it were an on the job, uh, injury. So that has not been lifted. It is not scheduled to be lifted until, I think, at current, uh, December 31st of this year. And it's very likely it will get extended as it approaches that date as well. So anytime somebody tests positive, it is automatically treated as if it occurred on the job regardless. So, um, what we're asking for tonight is, because the firefighters don't have health insurance through the city, and that is not unusual for paid on call fire departments, um, we had to send this person to his personal physician. Uh, those two trips that they made to their doctor totaled less than $300. And I don't have, this happened so early in the process, I have no data to say, oh, this person averages about this much pay. So our estimates would be somewhere between $150 and $200 of back pay. Uh, they were out essentially from May 8th till almost July, dealing with some long-term, uh, things that popped up through that process. So grand total, we're looking at less than, or somewhere around $500 or less for back pay and doctors' bills. And, uh, we've, uh, kind of cited the payroll budget as a place where we can locate those funds. And that is where we're at. So tonight, that is the request. It doesn't necessarily set precedent. If something occurs in the future, we can address this on a case by case basis. But it is a reminder to council that regardless, um, it is always treated for firefighters, police, and EMS as on the job injury. So with that, if you have any questions, I think it was listed in here, um, lost wages were 400 to 500, and I think that's a little bit of a typo. The request was a grand total of 400 to 500 dollars in this particular instance. So.
The actual, it's, it's 300 on medical and, and reimbursement for lost wages, not to exceed 500. So you're saying, uh, not to exceed total between the medical and wages of 500?
Correct.
Ellen, did you make that correction?
Senator, back pay as well.
So, so the request of council action is not to exceed total of 500 dollars. And that's a combination of medical and back pay. And, and I believe then that goes on our workers' comp then, too, doesn't it?
Mayor and council, I believe if we settle this through the payroll fund, we do create a first in injury report, which is not uncommon for this sort of instance, but I don't believe this'll, uh, make it to work comp because we're not putting in that sort of request. Um, this worker's lost time is essentially just being compensated through payroll.
Is it an OSHA recordable?
Mayor and council, potentially. Uh, the first in injury report is done through the League of Minnesota Cities. Uh, where that is taken to the next step is beyond me. This is something that I would venture to guess so many cities have reported that I don't know if it qualifies or requires, uh, to be put past OSHA in this situation.
I'm not sure if it's OSHA, but it's, it's starting to really impact cities', uh, workers' comp rates. It really is. Because they have, between fire and, and law enforcement have presumption clauses now, um, it is really jacking up rates. So it's, it's, it's the unfortunate thing, and they're trying to deal with it through the legislative process, because, uh, this and PTSD, um, this, at least you're in and out over a longer period of time, but it's like an injury. Uh, what's really starting to affect is the presumption of PTSD. And that's, that's not something to get over quickly. You may be on it permanently. And it really isn't appropriate for workers' comp, which is an injury. But in this case, I think it will, will impact that. So. But that being said, um, we have a request for a not to exceed number of 500 dollars to include medical reimbursement and back wages. Uh, do we have a, you have anything else you want to say, Assistant Chief?
No, if there's any questions, I can feel them. No, if there's any questions, I can field them. Otherwise, that was all that we had.
All right. So I'll accept a motion to approve as clarified?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I would move as the RCA for the firefighter COVID-19 reimbursement as discussed.
Second, we have a motion by Councilmember Rainville, second by Councilmember Greenberg. All those in favor, please signify by saying-
Mr. Mayor, I have a question, though.
Oh, that's all right.
To Assistant Chief Lawrence, is this, are these funds, now granted it's not a lot, but are these funds available to be reimbursed through the American Rescue Act?
Mayor and Council, there's potential for that. I think a lot of cities utilize their CARES money and front-loaded people's, you know, sick time. I'm, I'm not sure how the sheriff's office would have handled it. A lot of places gave forty hours of sick time to, that was kind of set aside as COVID sick time for these sort of instances. And, you know, so every city handled it slightly different, but that's kind of where that CARES money originated. The American Rescue Act seems a little bit more almost stimulus, infrastructure type of things, but I, I would venture to guess that there would be no issue drawing it from there as well, so.
So can we amend the motion to have staff track that? In that, in, in the instance we are able to get reimbursed, we could get reimbursed through the Rescue Act? Because I think our CARES money was gone as of last year, so, and I don't believe council ever approved anything, because at that time, they were with Ramsey. Now, we do have a Ramsey firefighter in the, in the audience, if he knows if they-
I'm not, sorry.
A former-
Former, excuse me, former. I meant when you were with Rams at the time. Do you know if they did that, Mr. Rickard?
I am not sure.
Okay, all right, thank you. Just so that if we are able to be reimbursed, that we are able to-
So you want to amend that motion, Councilmember Greenberg, you want to hold your second on that as well?
Yes.
All right. And it, it will be good to know in case something else pops up, because the, the rescue funds actually have till 2024 to utilize all of those, so this will be good to know. So with that amended, amendment to the motion, any other comments or questions? Seeing, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. So we are going to try and do something here. Hold a Mr. Kimmel by. Follow.
Hello, Bruce.
It's all Bruce, that's Eli.
Hi, Jeff.
Can you hear me?
You guys hear me?
We can hear you loud and clear.
Great.
So you're, you're up on the docket here, a little earlier than planned, so that's good. You may have some questions, but if you want to walk us through, we'll take a look here, we have a resolution on the front page of the packet, 2021-26, resolution providing for the sale of $2,830,000 in general obligation bonds. And Bruce, you're going to walk us through the key items of this, and then we'll, we'll get our action item out of it.
Great. So yeah, discussing about giving a, a, just a overview of the financing plans for the 2021 aid bond issuance, to answer any questions that you have as the members of the city council, and then to have you consider. If moving the bond issue forward, I want to start that this is not a legally binding resolution, still have the ability to change course. Remembering the discussion that we're having tonight about the pre-sale report, and to again, go ahead to move towards that September fourteenth bond sale. You will be considering a resolution on September fourteenth to actually award the bond to the winning bond underwriting firm, and that's really the point I want you to be, obligating the city to move forward with the financing, or to, to actually close on the financing. And with that interruption, why don't I just walk through some of the key points in the pre-sale report? And this is something that scholars does all bond issues, just to lay out the key terms and conditions of the financing as we see it, and to make sure that we're in sync with you and your expectations for the financing, and to make sure we're answering any questions, because what we don't want to happen is for us to take this on September fourteenth, and then to come to your city council meeting that evening and have anyone say, hey, wait a second, I didn't think this bond issue was going to work this way. And at that point, it's kind of, it's, it's too late to change course. So look forward to any questions that you have around the financing, since it's been a little while since the city of Nowland's been in the bond market. All right. So as you're aware, this financing is to fund five distinct purposes. Four of the purposes are Street Improvement Project, the Krypton Street, and 189th Lane Improvement. And I know that all of these projects have some other streets involved, we've just, we've abbreviated the names of the projects just for simplicity, but I, I think you're well aware of what all is involved with each one of these improvement projects. So Krypton and 189th, as you know, were actually completed last year, assessments were actually filed last fall, and property owners have either prepaid or started making assessment payments here in 2021 on those projects. Then Ebony Street and Rogers Lake area are projects that are underway this year, as I understand it, or will be. And then the city will be financing assessments on both of those projects later this fall for first collection in 2022, unless, of course, the relevant property owners decide to prepay before the, the end of the payment period. And then finally, you've got a portion of the projects to fund fire equipment and other city equipment, as I understand it, and this is a completely separate purpose, it'll be funded with property taxes, and it's really just for, you know, the sole benefit of the city. But the nice thing about general obligation bonds like this is that even though you've got some portions of the bond that are funded or significantly funded with assessments as well as property taxes, you can merge those with other purposes such as for equipment. And it's much more efficient to bundle, you know, several project purposes together. You have more economies of scale in the bond issue, larger bonds attract more bidders, typically in, in the competitive sale market, and so it makes sense, we think, to add the equipment purposes, and then we can think of how that looks further. Also, through the appropriate specific chapters in the Minnesota statute that authorize the city to undertake the general obligation bond issue, and then specifically for bonds that are paid in practice assessment, then also to fund equipment purchases. And so we outline that here. The overall term of the bond is approximately ten years to four months, and the, the different portions are going for different amounts of time, but overall, the bond issue will, will mature in full in February of 2032, which is just over ten years now. Your first interest payment will be in August of next year, and then again, the principal payments will be in February of 23, June 32. One thing I want to note for those of you who are new to bond issuance is, it's a little bit confusing sometimes, but the February payment, let's say the February payment in 2023, that is really going to be paid for from your 2022 budget. And that's really due to how we collect and receive property taxes here in Minnesota. As you know, first half gets paid in May, cities get that first half distribution from the county in June typically, and then second half gets paid in October, and typically cities receive that in November, early December. So that February payment in the next year is really going to give a little bit of cushion, a little bit of time for you to have that distribution and then to make that payment as, essentially at the beginning of the next year. But sometimes it just gets, you know, a little bit tricky to, to follow that, really you're looking at financial obligations that relate to your budget year 2022 through 2031, even though those payments are occurring in February of the, of the next year. I also wanted to point out that these bonds will be prepayable in part or full at your full discretion, approximately six or, I guess, a little bit over six years from the issuance date. So starting on February first of 2028, you would have the ability to refinance any portion of those bonds outstanding for interest comp savings and or to pay off, such as if you received a lot of early payouts on the assessments over, you know, the next six years, you could use those early payouts to pay off a portion of the bonds and reduce the, the debt service for the city accordingly. So that's kind of something that again, is at your discretion, when we take this on the bond issue, the interest rate will be locked, and the bank, the winning underwriting firm won't have the ability to change the interest rate, there's no rate reset, unless you decide to refinance the bonds on, on or after February of 2028. Moving on to the next stage, a bank qualification or REQ, as we call it, just is a designation for issuers who issue less than $10 million a year in practice of debt. That would be you here in 2021, and that attracts lower interest rates than just standard tax and bonds. So that's a plus for the city. As it relates to your credit rating, as I'm sure you're aware, you have a really stellar rating, especially for a city of a down depth size, has double-A plus with standard reports. There's only one notch to go from there, which is triple-A, and most tall, triple-A communities are much larger with much larger budgets and fund, fund balances, has really a function of their size than Nowland. So you, you're really in really rarefied air with your double-A plus rating, and we'll be facilitating a new rating, working with Lori and Lori in advance of the bond issuance, and I, and I don't see any issues with, with F and P affirming that double-A plus rating. We're hoping to, or suggesting that you follow the path that you have with several previous bond issues entering a competitive sale, that take advantage of your double-A plus rating and really cast the widest net possible for purchasers of your bond issue. This is, has yielded really good results for the city in the past, and it's really considered a practice, including by the government finance officers, association, or GFOA. So we don't really see any reason to deviate from that, especially with short term, just over ten years, and this very straightforward financing approach. We know that there will be investors eager to stamp up these bonds through a competitive sale. That continues in the next section. I, I won't go into too much detail on how this can be structured, but just know that we are dialed in on the amount of money you need for these projects. We've already talked several times with Lori, Lori, and Shane, and we'll continue to do that, so that if there is any change in any of those project budgets, we will be aware of that and can use some of the contingency that's built into the preliminary bond structure to, to adjust the proceeds that you're receiving if necessary. But at this point, I, I think you're, you're pretty well dialed in in the project cost that you need to, you need to find out at this time.
Bruce, can I ask a question on that?
Yes.
Because when we put these numbers together, we had engineering estimates, and our, our bids came in significantly lower than that, and I see the numbers that we're using here still show the original estimates. When I think about, you know, we've talked about arbitrage in the past, if we come in borrowing a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars more than we need for these projects, do we need to do that, one? And if we do it, how do we make sure that we, we don't stumble on the arbitrage with those extra funds?
Yeah, I'm not sure I caught every word of your question there, but I think it was a lot of you overissue, essentially. And what we would suggest in that case is that you just use any excess proceeds to reduce the amount of, of city levy that would be required to pay debt service. In other words, you, you're not collecting a hundred percent of the debt service on any of the improvement projects from assessments. As you know, you're only assessing a portion of those projects, and you also have a levy on the assessment first, uh, portion. So if you did end up with excess proceeds, that would be a good problem to have, and we would just want to make sure we work with your city staff to use those funds to pay that service, and that would essentially just alleviate the, the debt levy requirement over, you know, one or two or three years as a light city bond.
And, and what about for the homeowners? How will we make sure that, what we estimated and the bid's coming in lower than that, make sure that they're taken care of in this process and, and take advantage of the reduced cost?
Well, you know, I guess I defer to stand on that. I know you are assessing, I believe, all these projects, you know, different amounts, but certainly less than fifty percent in all cases, I believe. Or maybe it is fifty percent in some cases. In any case, I don't believe you are taking a significant reduction in your costs. I, I know Shane looked at what we were using for estimates in structuring the bonds, and felt like those were going to be pretty close. So if you think it's going to be wildly off, I, I guess I would like to know that before we sell the bond. But if it's, if it's only off by a few thousand dollars, then, you know, I think we can essentially apply that to reducing the tax impact for all of the citizens of, of Nowland that are essentially subsidized in those projects.
Okay. But if it ends up being six figures, you definitely want to know about that.
Yeah, if it's major, then we should probably reevaluate it and see if we can address that before the bond sale occurs.
Okay.
Since also certainly anyone else away with any other questions, I know you have a, a busy agenda tonight, or otherwise on your agenda. We don't see any refunding opportunities, just closing on page two of the pre-sale report, but we do monitor your existing debt every three months, and stay in touch with your team to alert you to any refinancing costs for interest comp savings. There are some continued disclosure in our arbitrage monitoring requirements. This should be pretty straightforward as it relates to these projects, because you will be spending also the proceeds relating to the improvement projects very quickly, and in fact, on the first year, that they're reimbursing yourself. And then even on the equipment financing, I don't have any qualms about you maybe holding on to some of that money for some period of time. It's, it's a relatively small amount of the overall financing, and even if you do need to rebate arbitrage earnings, well, let me put it this way, arbitrage earnings are when you're holding on to the proceeds of the bond issue, and you happen to earn more on your accepting of those proceeds than you're actually paying on the bond issue. It's been virtually impossible to earn arbitrage until relatively recently, and it's still not very easy to do, but there are some cases in which cities are earning arbitrage. But all that means is that you need to send a, a check to the IRS for anything that you're earning above the bond yield itself. And so I always tell my clients, it's a good thing to earn arbitrage, because that means you're not losing any money on the bond profits you're holding on to. You just need to be aware of it, so that you're ready to cut a check to the IRS to send back any excess earnings. I don't really see that happening here, but we'll make sure we keep tabs on it and alert your team if, if there is an arbitrage situation. Risk factors, special assessments, you know, there are, there's always the chance of a mismatch between the assessment revenue that you receive, the kinds of those revenues, and when you're paying debt service. And so we just wanted to flag, this is nothing specifically to these projects. And so we just wanted to flag, this is nothing specifically to these projects, but it's just a feature of assessment projects in Minnesota, the flexibility that people have to pay this off early, that you might just need to adjust the city's share a little bit to make up for any prepayments or early payouts. And then there are some other folks involved inside others. Kenny Grayden is a bond counsel firm. Those are the folks that prepare the resolution, the official resolution awarding the bonds, and they're the ones that look at the bond issue, will make sure that they are legally valid and that the that the bonds are tax stamps to the investors, which is a pretty key finding. As we discussed, we'll also be talking with F and P and Bond Trust Services as the paying agent, making the actual semi annual payments to the bond holders. So as the mayor mentioned, there is a resolution essentially giving us a green light to move forward with the financing. We'll hopefully can go over that in a moment. It's pretty short and sweet. Moving on to the calendar on page five, you can see we're here tonight for the pre-sale review. We'll be talking in early December, or excuse me, December, not December, to review the official statements with with Lori and Lori primarily. We'll be sending that off to the market on or around the same day and talking with F and P also in early September. I believe that's soon after Lori returns, Lori returns to Lori's campaign. Then we'll be getting the ratings sometime back right after Labor Day, the seventh or eighth, and then we would be taking bids and coming to you on giving us September 14th for you to award the bonds to the winning bidder. Finally, you'd be receiving the proceeds at the closing day since we're updating on October 7th. So then you can see the recognition, really just does it do any order, just gives us the green light for with city staff to proceed towards the September 14th bond sale and for the official statement in conjunction with your team. I would like to just go over briefly some of the debt service pages, not giving too much detail, but we've given both overview pages as well as specific pages for each one of these five purposes within the bond issue. This first page you can see is what's called the sources and uses of funds. It shows how all of the projects, where the money is going and in terms of the project, that's the uses of funds. And then the source of the funds are up above, and you can see that we are capturing in the pre-cancelling received last fall on the Krypton and 189 Lane project. And then the first tier of collections that you'd receive or will be receiving here in 2021 from the folks that didn't prepay in the fall of 2020. So all of that money is being accounted for in the sources of funds, and so as you do think the size of bond issue from what it otherwise would be. We aren't, however, assuming any coupés on Ebony and Rogers Lake. That was after discussions with the city team, you know, out of that abundance of, essentially abundance of caution, not wanting to be short on cash and, and, you know, not not wanting to assume too much or too little, and so I think we all felt that appropriate, or at least reasonable to go with full financing on those two projects. Then the next page is the overall debt schedule.
Bruce, can I ask?
No, I'm going to hear.
Bruce, so on that page there, the summary, so the issue summary is 2,971,340. And we were looking at 2,800,000. So what's what's the difference there? We're looking at.
So the difference, the difference is, the reason why the power mount is 2,830,000 and the overall sources and uses of funds are almost $300,000, if you take, you have received $110,000 or $111,000 of prepayment on the first two improvement projects last year, and you have $30,000 of net assessment revenue coming in here in 2021 on the Krypton and 189 Lane project. So that roughly $140,000 of assessment revenues from those first two improvement projects makes up the difference.
Okay. And so in this way, if we did see significant cost savings on the Ebony and the Rogers Lake projects for this year, that would affect that, that could potentially affect that number as well. And then the equipment certificates you had mentioned before, if we aren't using, if we get good deals on our trucks, there's a lot of other equipment that that money can go to and we can utilize that over a three-year period.
Right. And so this, I wanted to point out the equipment certificates, that $850,000 under the deposits of the project construction funds, that's really the amount of net proceeds that we are targeting to to generate from the equipment certificate portion of the bond issue, and that the city would be able to use for a number of both current year and future year equipment purchases. And by equipment, I mean mostly useful for public work and some other, you know, large purchases, if not for staplers and copiers, things like that.
Unless they're really, really expensive staplers and copiers.
Yes. So moving on to the next page, and again, and I'll stop after to serve the gist of these debt service pages, but this page represents all five of those purposes mashed together into the overall, you know, proposed debt structure. And some of the improvement projects are getting paid over nine years, some are getting paid over 10 years, and then the equipment portion is being payback over nine years. So it's a relatively short budget here, as you can see. And if you look at the coupon column, these are the conservatively estimated interest rates that we are anticipating for this bond issue, ranging from 0.5% on the low end up to 1.5% on the high end, and with an average coupon of about 1.15%. But what I'm trying to highlight also, to go back to the header, you can see that we actually inflated the whole market rate by 1.5 basis points. And so what this means, if you hold those these bonds in today's market, we think you'd be closer to 0.9% or, you know, probably right around 10% in today's market as opposed to an average of 1.15 or 1.2. So we always like to have a little bit buffer to allow for some of our improvements. The market on this date of sale, which is September 14th, will decide, you know, we're not, we're not bidding on these bonds, we're strictly your advisor. We don't bid on any bond issues because we're not an underwriting firm, we're strictly an advisory firm. But lately, especially lately, we've been beating our pre-sale estimates with lower rates than we are hoping to be at least longer mark, if not a little bit lower with the entry time you're available in September. And then everyone, the next several pages are just regular detail on each of those five projects. So let me just walk through Crip Town and maybe you can kind of pick ahead. You can see the debt survey that relates to Crip Town projects over nine years because, again, we've already calculated one year of Crip Town, also some, also a portion of the sort of the median on the figure page. And then if you flip to the next Crip Town page, you can see sort of a cash flow where we're showing debt service and then the assessment revenues coming in and the levy requirement. And so those positive numbers in the far right hand column are what is what's the city's obligation or expected obligation to debt service. So your annual assessment's about $13,700 and levy requirement, you know, declining over time, but in the $14,000 per year range. You can see we do something similar for 189,000, for 189 Lane, for Ebony and for Rogers Lake. And then if I haven't watched you, but you skipped me ahead, we often have a page for the equipment certificates, and I wanted to point that out because you can see that we're up to the debt service debt, just a little bit over $100,000 here for this purpose of the bond issue. And and so that would be something that would be in your budget starting in 2022 would be, you know, an estimated, we'll we'll have real numbers on September 14th, so as you build your budget this fall, you'll know exactly what your debt service is. But you can see we're estimating here about $100,000 a year for essentially $850,000 of of equipment. And again, these are paid over nine years. And the reason for those people, the clients that, and they need to back, that go for the 10 years, but because of the origin of these bonds and with the February 1 payment date, we can really only go up to February 1 of 2031 instead of to 2032. So it's pretty remarkable, because I guess, hey, you know, even with these a little bit inflated interest rate exceptions, we're projecting that you'll pay a total of $52,000 interest on $880,000 of bonds. So it's really a pretty small fraction of the principal amount that you're paying in interest due to the lower low interest rate requirement. So what I wanted to point out is that the last four pages of the report are the individual estimated effective scenarios for the four improvement projects. And you can see the assumed interest rate or the the actual percentage on these assessments for Krypton and 189 was 5% interest rate. And then Ebony and Rogers Lake are assuming the same 5% about folks who, again, with the last two projects where there's any prepayments upfront, if people do decide to prepay, they would avoid any intrinsic expense as it relates to these assessments. So while I'm testing, I have some questions you have about the pre-sale report. I appreciate you letting me go through this in more detail than I might normally, but I know it's been, again, a few years since you've been in the market, and I want to make sure you have a full understanding of the financing. Thank you.
So Bruce, on the debt service schedule, what is the 105% of total? What?
Mayor, I did catch that with your question.
Well, on the debt service schedule, and the column that says 105% of total, why 105%?
Well, 105%, okay. Yeah, so Minnesota's law requires issuers who are essentially levy for, and I'm using, you can't see me doing air quotes, but I'm doing air quotes around levy for 105% of the debt service. And essentially that is to protect yourself in the event that you might have people that are delinquent on their property taxes. So the idea is to levy for 105% of the debt service so that even if you have delinquencies, you have enough to pay the debt service at 100% of debt service. Now, I'll point out that in Nowland, your delinquency rate is very, very low. And also, there's a very easy workaround in reality where you can just show, you don't even have to show anyone, but you can you can avoid having to do 105% by just being able to show that you have other funds available in the event that you do have larger than usual delinquencies. And of course, the city of Nowland has extremely healthy fund balances and would not have any problems paying its debt service obligations. And so we're required to sort of show that 105% number, but it's more for formality and not really what you'll need to follow through on with actual budgeting in the future.
All right. Other questions from the council?
So Bruce, this is Jason. So on the total debt service schedule, when you look at the 2.8 million, it looks like the levy amount that's going to start in 2022 is like 317, 316,000. Does that include the 105% or not?
Right. So on that first page of 317, that is a mashup of every purpose, and that is the actual debt service, so that doesn't make it 105%. But what I'll what I'll go through right away is, you know, a large chunk of that debt service is being paid with special assessments, right? Or I think the biggest amount of that is special assessments. So you'd want to take that off the top, and then your true levy requirement would be what's left after the assessment revenues. And if you look at the specific improvement project pages, those levy amounts are based on 105%. So, you know, the 300-some thousand dollars here really give you the full picture because it doesn't take out the assessments, but then also the improvement pages do include the 105%. So those are more conservative in their own way as well.
But did the individual improvement sheets take out the assessments or make an assumption on the assessments?
Yes. So if you go back to the Krypton, the second page of the Krypton debt service, and I'm sorry, I hope you had page numbers on these.
You do electronically, but for some reason we didn't done it printed, so.
You can see on the second Krypton page, we just showed the total estimated principal interest, then you multiply that by 105%. Then you subtract out the multiple of the moves, and the net result is the estimated level of 5% plus that's inflated by an extra 5%.
Okay. If you take the levy surplus on Krypton there on the debt service schedule, add it to the assessments, you come up with 105% total of 256,024.65.
Right.
And the total P and I on that is 243,837. And the interest would be 13,833 at a principal of 230. Yeah, if you can be borrow, this is the time to be doing it. Other questions from council members?
Keith, also, if anything comes up for you after tonight's discussion, feel free to give me a call or route your questions through the mayor or through city staff. You know, this is, again, the be all and end all. We want to make sure that we continue to refine as appropriate and to position the bond issue as efficiently as possible to get great results in September. And again, if you do have any questions, just let me know and I'd be happy to talk it over.
I just want to, you know, for the record, you know, when we, back in May, when we had our assessment hearings, we had for the Ebony and Garnett and for the Rogers Lake area, we had projections based on engineering projections, and the estimates came in under. And in our notes at the time were, we as a city always wait till the end of the project when we know all our costs. On these, we, you know, we talked about Ebony and Garnett picking up that extra 600 feet and doing all the road at one time, and the city will pick up those costs and not add them to the bill. So once all our costs are known and there are any cost savings, we do then pass those on to the residents. And that's why we don't process the assessments prior to the completion of the project. That also gives people a chance to see what the total cost will be and whether they want to prepay, and we'll know that by November 15th, I believe is the date they have till. So if they have until November to do prepay, how does that affect the sale of the bonds since we won't know those numbers? If that makes sense. You still with us?
Yes, I'm here.
So if 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 the prepay doesn't, we don't know the who's prepaying until November, and we sell the bonds in in September?
Right. So we won't know, that's exactly right, we're taking, you know, it's it's an imperfect science. We, at this point, we're assuming no prepay. If, however, between now and September 14th, you get more information, you know, either word of mouth or otherwise, that a lot of folks are thinking about prepaying, we can always reduce reduce the size of the bond issue. always reduce, reduce the size of the bond issue even on the date of sale. Um, and, and, you know, quickly add in some assumed prepaid, uh, and, and reduce the, you know, the actual financing amount accordingly. The only risk there is if people don't prepaid, uh, you would essentially need to supplement with, you know, city general, um, to make up for that lack of bond, bond proceeds. Not the end of the world, and you're in really good shape, um, through very good financial management, but that's sort of the push and pull when it comes to whether to assume prepaid assessments.
So in the situation where, you know, we've gotten the small cities, uh, road funds, we got approximately $90,000 in that. If, if, do you have any idea if we were to see a significant or, or be off on the prepaid and come up short? Since this is a road project, do you have any idea if those road funds would be appropriate to use to pay this down?
I'm sorry, mayor, was there a question for me?
Yes.
Uh, I, I, I don't know. I think that would be something we want to discuss. I, I think it's plausible. I just don't know what other priorities or, you know, policies you set around the use of that road fund.
Well, since we didn't know we were going to get it, we didn't put any specific debt against it or expenditures against it at this point, so. You know, it is with the legislature. We might get it, we might not.
Right, right.
So Bruce?
You know, the last, you know, just like to share, if I could, mayor and council, I don't want anyone to think that just because we've had a really long conversation about deficits, that there's any, anything of concern. Um, I really just wanted to, and that's useful a lot of detail because, again, some of you haven't been exposed to this. I, I want to just end with reiterating that you, you are in excellent financial condition and to represented in your double A plus rating, and that this bond issue will be very attractive to the market. Um, there's a, there's a pretty huge imbalance of supply and demand right now. There's way too, well, there's a lot of demand from investors chasing too little supply from issuers like the city of Nowland. And so it's good for you because when you do enter the market, people will be able to, people will be willing to accept lower interest rates than they otherwise would if there was a more, you know, a more even balance of supply and demand. It's been this imbalance along with, you know, things like COVID and economic concerns that have kept interest rates so low for so long. And right now, we're actually back at all times short lows in terms of, in terms of something called the bond wire index, which is the most common way of tracking overall bond yields for municipal bonds. So, you know, we don't know what's happening between now and September 14th, but, um, you're well positioned to fund these projects and this equipment purchase, and I think they'll be very pleased, um, barring some major market change with the sale results in September.
Well, if we knew what those market changes might be, we'd, we'd all be sitting in more comfortable places than we are right now, so.
Right.
Uh, council member Alders, did you have another question before we let him go here?
Yeah. So, um, just help me understand to make sure I'm following this. So, if I look at the, just one of these five different projects that we've got, we look at the levy surplus is what we would be on the hook for, assuming everybody paid their assessment upfront? Is that correct?
No.
No. The, because you only are assessing a portion of each project, um, what those numbers show is even with people paying over time, you're, uh, the city itself and city taxpayers are contributing about, let's just say, half of the debt service for each one of those projects.
Okay.
And, and so if, if people, let's say, if people, um, did have a lot of prepaid or paid off early, because that's the thing in Minnesota, even if you don't prepaid before the interest kicks in, you can still pay off early at any point during the 10-year term and just write a check for the principal that is due with any accrued interest up to that early payoff date. And so if, if you can imagine, if you're on the city side and you are correcting everyone that didn't prepay to pay off over the next 10 years, and then a bunch of people pay off in year four or five, then, you know, you might be short a little bit in terms of your assessment revenue. You might have to levy a little bit more to make up the difference. So that's actually part of the reason why most of these sets, uh, an assessment interest rate that's higher than the bond rate is really to protect the taxpayer from a, a big change in what their portion of the debt service is. If, if that, if that makes sense?
Yes. So that makes sense. So if I look at approximately half, which is the, what you've got listed as the levy surplus and add all those up, um, it looks like in 2022, uh, we would start looking at about a $230,000 a year levy to cover all these projects.
Yeah, and I'll change it down a little bit because of the, the 105, um, times, but you're in the right ballpark. Yes, it would be, I, I don't have a kind of a calculator in front of me and I'm not financial advisor that still counts in fingers, but you know, it'd probably be in the 250 or 260 range.
All right.
Including the equipment proportion. Yep.
So 250, Mary, how many homes are in Nowland?
Uh, I'd say 1,500.
So.
Well, that's, when we do a mailing list, it's about 1,500, correct? Yeah, but that's businesses also.
So we're looking at a tax burden of about 166 bucks per home for all five of the projects?
If that would happen.
Well, all five.
That's what Lori was saying. That's why the, the big jump next year is when this kicks in.
Yeah.
That's why we're having this discussion now, so we have a chance to, uh, work through the details before our August 31st meeting. Anything else for Bruce?
Great job, Bruce. You can do my taxes.
Anything else for us, Bruce?
No, I think, I think we're all prepared for you to consider the, uh, resolution.
All right. So we do have a resolution in front of your packet, resolution 2021-26. And, and basically, as Bruce said, this gives him authorization to proceed with staff to start putting together a packet for us to review coming up in September. Gives us a chance if we want to make any corrections or adjustments to, uh, communicate that as well. So with that, we have a resolution in front of you. Do I have a motion to move the resolution forward?
Mr. Mayor?
Council member Alders?
I'll make a motion to move resolution number 2021-26 for providing the sale of 2.83 million in general obligation bond funds forward.
All right. We have a motion from council member Alders.
I second it.
I have a second from council member Blake. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Bruce. Thanks for taking time out of your, your, uh, awaness here to, uh, to work with us over the phone, so.
Yeah, I'm proud of you. Thanks for allowing me to be here to be a speaker and, of course, being there with you in person on September 14th.
All right. Thanks, Bruce.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bruce.
All right. Bye.
We're nine minutes ahead.
We'll clear that soon enough. All right. Engineering, let me, uh, turn that speaker off. Anyway, one item on engineering, and that is Ebony and Garnet. So, let me get to my email from the attorney. In your package, you have an email from Shane. All right. You have a notice of default that was sent to Molnow Trucking from Shane with a request to respond to the issues by August 6th. Shane's office received notice that the registered letter was not deliverable because of dogs. They couldn't get to the company because of dogs. The mail, the mail carrier will not go to the, deliver the mail because of concern over animals at the present. So, to our knowledge, they did not receive Shane's letter last Friday and resent. Uh, they also sent an email copy. So what Attorney Rupee, um, sent this email just before we started and asked two things would be done tonight. One, you've all saw Shane, you've all seen Shane's summary and, uh, the lack of response from the company. Bob spoke with Anna Molnow this afternoon regarding Ebony and Garnet. Hannah states that she mailed the original payment, performance bonds, June 29th. She's not sure why they weren't received. She's ordered duplicate original bonds and will contact West Bend Mutual, the insurance company, the bond, the bonding agent, uh, to regard the status update on when new bonds will be available. Uh, she subsequently contacted her insurance carrier to one of Shane's points and had Hawkinson Anderson added as an additional insured on certificate of insurance. Shane did receive an electronic copy of that this afternoon. And she'd be, she would, she emailed that. She would be meeting with Nick, the owner and the others this afternoon to prepare a preliminary schedule, and when completed, she will email it to Shane. As of our meeting tonight, Shane and Bob had not received that. And Hannah said she would have someone call Shane today to arrange for a pre-construction conference. Bob stated to Hannah that should these items not be completed to Shane's satisfaction by the end of the day, he expects the city council to authorize our attorney, Bob Rupee, to send a letter notifying the company surety, West Bend, that we were requesting a conference as a first step to declaring her company in default. I further explained this action by the city may have adverse consequences on her company obtaining future bonds from the surety company. She said that she understood the city's position and will work on resolving the outstanding issues today. As of the start of our meeting, Bob did not have those yet. So it may be happening tonight. So what Bob has asked is that the council, let me read into the record his letter to Molnow Trucking. This was sent via certified mail, Nick Molnow, president, Molnow Trucking LLC, Noah Young America, and to West Bend Mutual Insurance Company, Edmonton, Wisconsin. Regarding the city of Nowland requesting for a conference, Ebony and Garnet Road Improvement Project Bond Number 2491013. Uh, the intention was for Bob to have a copy of this to the council and then we could discuss it. He didn't send it out because he started getting some, finally some response from the firm. But since he didn't have it before he went into his meeting, he asked that I share this email that he was sent out and the registered letter, and then the council can decide if we want to have Bob pursue this further. So I will read you the letter that he sent, and then his request is to the council to engage his services to pursue this to its end.
Can I get a copy of that?
Yes. Uh, I, actually, he sent it to Lori too, so it should be in her email. Okay, I'll send it to you then. Uh, Dear Mr. Molnow and Mr. Murphy, this office represents the city of Nowland. Mr. Molnow has previously sent a letter dated August 3rd from Shane Nelson, city engineer advising him the city considered him in default of the contract between Molnow Trucking LLC and the city of Nowland relating to the Ebony and Garnet Road Improvement Project. Specifically, the letter advised Mr. Molnow that there are certain requirements of the contract that have not yet been met. Article 21 on the instruction of bidders, to bidders requires that you execute and deliver the agreement, the performance bond and payment bond within 15 days. Execute agreement was received on June 25th, 2021. Scanned copies of the performance bond and payment bond were received on June 30th, 2021. However, the originals of the performance bond and the payment bond have not been received as requested. For your phone conversation on August 2nd with Mr. Nelson, it was the city's understanding that Molnow Trucking believes they may have been lost in the mail and duplicate copies of the bonds have been requested. To date, the city has not received a hard copy original of either the performance bond or the payment bond, item two. accordance with the article six of the supplementary conditions, Hawkinson Anderson Associates Incorporated, shall also be listed as additional insured on the certificate of insurance. To date, the city has not received a revised certificate of insurance listing the city engineers as additional insured for contract documents. That was received late this afternoon. Item three, in accordance with article two of the standard general conditions, the contract was required to submit a preliminary schedule within 10 days after the effective date of the contract. Therefore, a preliminary schedule was due on July 1st, 2021. A preliminary schedule has not been received to date. In accordance with article four of the standard form of agreements, substantial completion of the project is required on or before September 3rd, 2021. And final completion is required on or before September 24th, 2021. To date, the city has not been provided with a preliminary schedule that shows the completion of the project by the above referenced completion dates. Item number four, in accordance with article two of the standard general conditions, the contract was required to attend a pre-construction conference with the owner, contractor, and engineer. City engineer has attempted to schedule a pre-construction conference with Molnow Trucking LLC and has not yet received a response. This, the letter sent to Mr. Molnow by the city engineer informed him that if the above items were not cured prior to Friday, August 6th, 2021, he would recommend to the city that this matter be turned over to my office to prosecution. As such, the city of Nowland hereby notifies Molnow Trucking LLC and its surety, West Bend Mutual Insurance Company, that the city is considered, considering declaring a contract or default pursuant to section 3.1 of the performance bond. City is requesting a conference among the city, your company, and the surety to discuss your lack of performance under the contract within 10 business days of the surety's receipt of this letter, as required by the terms of the performance bond. City prefers to work cooperatively with its contractors to resolve disputes. However, Mr. Molnow's lack of response and Mr. Nelson, to Mr. Nelson's numerous attempts to attain, obtain information outlined above leaves the city no choice but to proceed with the steps to potentially terminate its contract with Molnow Trucking. If you'd like to avoid further legal proceedings, I request you immediately contact Mr. Nelson at the following number or by email with the requested information. Sincerely, Robert T. Ruby. So, he's asking that he thinks they're, they're going to be coming forward. We're, we're in a difficult situation because the completion, substantial completion is September 3rd, and we haven't even had the basic meetings yet. So, as a council, we want to engage Bob to pursue this aggressively. Does anybody have questions, I guess, before we go there? Council member Ray.
Mr. Mayor, I, I would prefer that we direct Bob to take whatever steps it is to cancel this contract. Uh, they have not fulfilled what they were required to fulfill, and it's been quite a while. Um, and we should move forward to the next bidder, and hopefully that bidder will.
My, my understanding from Shane, um, is that... My understanding from Shane is that that can't be done.
Yeah, it sits on that letter, didn't it?
Yeah.
It takes so many days.
He said they have 10 days to respond to the letter.
Okay, legally.
And then he can, he can proceed with the default. He also said that should they default, the engineer's opinion is we go to the next lowest bidder, the attorney's opinion is we rebid and we lose the project this year, which also affects our bond. Now, the bond is usable over three years, so we don't have to, if we do it next year, we can still use that same bonded money.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake.
Is that the council's decision if we go to the next bidder or we postpone it, or whose decision is that?
I have not talked to the attorney about that. Shane, just when he was giving the update on the projects, said it's the attorney's opinion that we would have to rebid it from the state statute standpoint. I do not know, I haven't talked to him. And this, like I said, this came up when we were sitting here in the meeting tonight. I thought if he was going to send a letter, he would have that in the packets. So, our preference would be, is if they're found in default, to go to the next in line, if the next in line would still hold that number.
That number.
I understand, they left $50,000 on the table compared to all the other bids, they may not be interested in picking it up anyway. So, we certainly can ask the attorney if that's a legal thing to do and if the second in line would be interested in pursuing that if they defaulted.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Raynor.
If we were to go to the route of going to the second line and they say, no, we lost it, we lost it, are we then, or do we need to find out from Attorney Ruby, are we then obligated to go to the third, or can we at that time decide to rebid?
It sounds like, according to Shane, we would rebid.
Okay, so we're not obligating ourselves to go to the third, and I don't have those dollars in front of me, but it was a substantial between the third and fourth.
It was about $50,000.
Yeah, so, okay, as long as we don't obligate ourselves to...
Between second and third.
How much between the first and the second?
Thirty dollars.
Thirty dollars?
First and second was thirty dollars, so second was $296,358. Third was $348,967. So, if anyone wants to see my number.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Raynor.
Just to reiterate, state law requires us to take the low bid, even if it's a dollar less.
According to our attorney.
A dollar, yeah, a dollar less than the next guy.
If they are a reputable firm. And if you remember back to our assessment hearing, repeatedly residents of that neighborhood who've been through multiple trials on this road, said, do not give us a bad road, make sure whoever does this does a good job on it. And that was a repeated caution, as I went back through the minutes, and they're in tonight's package, as a matter of fact. If you look back in the assessment hearing minutes, that was one of the concerns. So we did pursue aggressively with Engineer Nelson to say, you need to make sure you're doing reference checks, background checks, that this is a reliable company. And he did his reference checks, he came back. And if there was any opportunity for the attorney to, to say this doesn't qualify, between the engineer Nelson and the attorney, they looked at what the information he gathered and said, I have no reason to disqualify them, their references say they can do the job and they've been good to work with. Trust me, at $30,000 on a road like this, that's not, I fought tooth and nail on this one.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Alders.
Who was second?
North Valley.
And with, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake.
We've worked with them before, North Valley.
Yes. They also came in second on Rogers Lake, but that was by $30,000, not $30. Yeah, if you look at all the other bids, North Valley was $50,000 at least under the other bids. And at $30,000, the attorney's quote is, if it's a dollar, it's a dollar, if they're a reputable company. The only thing that would exclude them is if they're not a reputable company, then you can go to the next in line.
Feels like we found that out, we can go to the next one.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greenberg.
Let's tell Ruby he can move forward with his letter. Let's get that resolved. Either they prove themselves to be reputable, or they prove themselves to be not. If not, then we can move from there. So, let's give him the green light.
All right, so that's your motion?
I make the motion that we give Ruby the green light to send the letter to this company and give them 10 days to respond and then determine if they are indeed reputable, which is part of the legal description, and maybe he's the only one who can say, nope, they're not reputable.
Yeah, he will have a legal definition of default. And at this point, they're on that edge. All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Greenberg, do we have a second?
Let's second that.
Second by Councilmember Raynor. Any other questions or comments? All right, so at this point, the motion is to authorize Attorney Ruby to take up the matter, pursue it, and get back to us on the next steps via this letter. All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And if you remind me at the end of the meeting, Ellen, I'll send that over to you.
Ellen, just send that to council.
Oh, good.
This is the letter? Yeah.
Mostly, that's mostly almost word for word, although that Shane said except for powers that they didn't receive.
Yep. Did Shane send it to West Bend also, though?
I don't think so.
No, that was Mr. Molnau.
No.
Mr. Molnau.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Raynor.
If I'm going to be a second on a motion that dealt with something that we had verbally, I would prefer that I also have a card copy, so I would ask that that be sent to myself if no one else wants it, that's fine.
All right, I'll get that sent out. All right. That puts us right back on time. Planning and zoning, Thompson, interim use permit, Jump City Inflatables.
Mr. Mayor?
Planner Stockman.
Just a brief summary of the project. The property is 15.83 acres in size. Mr. Thompson has just purchased the land in the last year. It has, it's an existing farmstead. He has added a 58 by 60 pole shed and is in the process of constructing a second, 54 by 99, to house the inflatables that he stores for his inflatable business called Jump City Inflatables. It's the off-site rental of bounce houses, castles, and water slides with no onsite parties. There is some outdoor storage of trailers in designated areas. So you have in your packet the city council findings based on the blue lined or red lined copy that was prepared following planning and zoning meeting. If you have any other questions or comments?
I do have. At our training session with planning and zoning in the council last month, Attorney Ruby alerted us to Minnesota statute that requires users to agree to the conditions imposed on applicants in granting IUPs. And we hadn't heard that before, and we said we're going to amend our documentation to include a sign-off that they agreed to all the conditions that we put on there.
Oh, you're right, yep.
And we said we're going to start doing this right away. So this should be part of this packet, and we have Mr. Thompson sign-off on all the conditions. And then Bob's other recommendation was, his preference is time limits on IUPs versus just leaving them open-ended, so that it gives us a chance to check in on IUPs rather than finding out somebody moved or quit the business later, as our spreadsheet tells us. So, two things he recommended, well, the one, he said state statute requires the applicant approval, and the other one, he just recommended some kind of time limit so that we can follow up on IUPs and not leave them open until ever, forever.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Planner Stockman.
You could do that one of two ways. The easiest way would be to establish a review process of all CUPs and IUPs, say every five years or so, whatever you'd like it to be, versus putting a deadline on all these IUPs and you're kind of making more work for yourself too in the long run and having them to come back with additional financial burden in that respect. So maybe that's something we want to look at a little bit harder?
Yeah, I think, I think it, you know, Bob said at the time that we kind of got lost and we didn't put it down as an action item. I think it's reasonable to say, what's the most cost-effective way of doing this? You know, you figure if, you know, permitted businesses are inspected every so often, what would make the most sense with our limited staff to still be able to do this on a, kind of like we do with the septic systems? You know, we have, every three years we'll follow up on septic systems. How do we, how do we do this without bringing more burden to the applicant because I don't want to have to start the whole process over? I think that the time limit is maybe it will be inspected at X number of years, say five years.
Right.
And if it's not meeting the conditions or isn't in business anymore, then we can clear it from the books. I think we need to do something on that rather than just say it's, it's a lifetime until we catch it not doing something right. But I think on the form itself, I think we need to include the applicant's sign-off if we're going to comply with statutes.
Agreed. I'll have to get an example from Bob and then I will incorporate that if you want to include that in your motion.
All right. So that being said, you have the planning and zoning recommendation, you have the findings and recommendation here, or the conditions here. Do we have a motion, and the motion should include Liz working with Bob to come up with the proper acknowledgement by the applicant as part of the record? One of the things, looking through Bob's thing, he was really strict on records, because that's all we have to go with.
Yes, we should.
So do we have a motion?
What, whatever motion need for?
Approval. So the approval of the application for Shawn Thompson to have an IUP for Jump City?
Well, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake.
It's a lot of stuff he's putting on this 15 acres.
I will make a motion so that we can have discussion, because I have a couple of things also to discuss, but I would move that the request for approval for interim use permit to allow an extended home occupation, Jump City Inflatables for storage at 8766 Norris Lake Road, PID 0833-25-32-008, that we would approve that, understanding I've got some concerns during our discussion.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second.
I'm going to second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Raynor and a second by Councilmember Blake. Now we can have discussion, so.
Mrs. Blake, do you want to go first?
Well, I have concerns about all these trailers. What happens here in Nowland, what I see, is that we allow certain things and then all of a sudden there become more and more and more things added. And even to start out with 16 trailers besides all these extra buildings, 15 acres, isn't that huge amount of property for as many things as are being put there?
And I just want to clarify, it's seven trailers not exceeding 16 feet.
Well, okay, seven trailers.
And the ability to add five additional trailers not exceeding 20 feet. And I will say from the meeting, and Mr. Thompson's here, from the meeting, that this is more than he was asking for. The planning and zoning said, if you ever think you might do something more, and he said, I'm not sure I would, but kind of got encouraged into more. So again, we have the ability to lessen that if that's a concern.
Well, I'm just wondering about the, how this is going to appear from the road, for the neighbors, for the area, I mean, you know, it's a lot of, a lot of things we're putting into this area.
Okay, so if you look at the illustration there, the parcel view, future Jump City 60 by 120 building over on the far right side there?
Right.
That's going to have 14 evergreen trees for screening, fencing at both ends, and a field access subject to county approval. So the red line is the building itself and the parking would be the white area on a...
That's for the Jump City 60 by 120?
Yes.
Okay.
And there will be a fence, the yellow lines are fences, and the green dots are evergreen trees. So the intention is to protect those, that white parking area from visibility from the road.
Okay.
All right? And the existing 58 by 60 over on the left side of the house? Again, that's where they're currently housing business equipment materials.
They're adding on to it.
At this point, they're not adding on to it, they're just going to put the slab, concrete slab, the white out the back there.
Okay.
So not enlarging the building. And as you can see, again, the yellow line there?
Yeah.
That would be fences again, so anything from the road, you wouldn't see back to any parking space he has behind the building.
What kind of fencing?
It's going to be six-foot...
White vinyl.
It's going to be the white vinyl, six-foot privacy fence. And I actually got to, I'm going to put some pine trees in there to block anything from the road. And her, nice step, I'll turn.
Yes, please introduce yourself to the council.
Press the button just once and it'll turn on the bottom.
I'm Shawn Thompson, owner of Jump City, me and my son own Jump City. And I can see where your concern is, because when we first started, we were working out the front of the building, and I put a slab out the back, so then that way we're not working out the front of that building, we're working out the back. So then we're going to put a privacy fence up, you won't see anything from the road.
Okay.
And ever since our meeting, we haven't worked out of the front of the building. I know when the grass was wet, we put a couple inflatables up on the cement just because of how wet the grass was from that rain we had the weekend, so.
And where are the trailers being parked, over here?
The trailers would be in the southwest corner of the property, kind of behind everything.
Kind of between the two buildings, the two red squares on the left or west side.
Okay. How come this is trailer parking?
So, the future building, the Jump City building being built on the east side of the property? It shows trailer parking there.
Yes, that's what it says here, trailer parking.
That's the concern she has is...
Yeah, that's going to be in the future, that parking there, but temporary, it's behind all the trees and I'm going to do the privacy fence and stuff like that.
The trailer parking will be totally behind the fence, it's just, there wasn't enough room with the box, is my guess, the box and the trees.
Yeah.
Your attention is, flip the trailers behind the fence, you don't see them.
Yeah.
Good.
I like stuff nice and, you know, I mean, trust me, I don't like to mess and I will definitely make sure that they're hidden from the road.
Good to hear.
Mr. Mayor?
Planner Stockman.
So just to clarify, when we came into this, yeah, Mr. Thompson was asking for three additional trailers. And then, yeah, there was some talk at planning and zoning and it was up to five. If you want to go back to three, that's reasonable. Secondly, just to clarify for Ms. Blake and the applicant, what we were talking about before was adding basically just a signature page to this...
I'm fine with that.
...document, so you're aware of all those conditions and then we just file that in our...
Yeah, we just have to have a record for future that you saw the conditions and...
Agreed. Agreed.
And approved.
Yeah.
Okay, that answers mine.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greenberg? Well, I look in the conditions, it says it's approved with the following conditions, there's hours of operation, and it specifies all the inflatables that are going to be cleaned, in storage, enclosed trailers, generators, also says shall not generate excessive or objectionable noise, vibration, smoke, and dust. Any change or intensification of the property use or activities not permitted by the interim use permit shall require an amended IUP. So, if there's any change in the future, and you want to expand and go into having parties or weddings or anything like that, you just reapply to the city, meet those requirements, and they'll reassess at that time. But for now, it's all Jump...
Jump City storage.
Jump City storage and all the inflatables.
And that was one of the reasons at the last meeting that they suggested, because I asked for three, and they suggested that I should go to five, so I don't have to go through the hassle of, you know, because I can't tell the future, I mean, are we going to get three more trailers or five more trailers? You know, so they said, just to save another, you know, trip to the hall, or whatever you guys call it, they're the ones that suggested jump, bump it up to five trailers.
Yeah, but you're going to have them behind a fence, and they won't be visible from the road, so, okay.
I can see where your concern was, because we were working out the front of the building, and there was a lot of action going on, so it's no more like that, it's out of the back, so.
Perfect.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
The questions I have, and what is on page two, number two at the top, Tuesdays and Wednesdays are cleaning days. Why are we defining what their cleaning days are? What if Tuesday and Wednesday are two solid days of rain, and they need to do it Thursday and Friday?
They don't have to do that.
We don't tell people when, we don't tell, now then, garage, you can only do oil changes on Thursday, so I would like to see that removed.
Did you see that ordinance?
No.
I agree.
I would like to see that removed.
Yeah.
I think the clarification was, what's the in and out trafficking, so basically, that's when you have staff on, when they actually clean.
And that's fine, but we don't need to dictate what days they clean. The next item is number four, C, 30 existing inflatable bounce houses, et cetera. Again, we don't dictate to businesses what number, what allotted amount of product they have in their storage, so I don't think that's, I'd like to see that removed. The interior storage, storing them interior is covered under number three, so those are the two things I'd like to see removed.
It'll be less restrictive, right, Mary?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Planner Stockman.
So, number three just states, storage is limited to indoor space with the exception of concrete pads and parking areas, so if you're okay with trailers or the inflatables being stored on the concrete pads, you know, otherwise, we need to specify that the inflatables belong inside, and only vehicles are outside, you know, trailers and vehicles, so we just have to be clear on that, is all.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
So, doesn't storage is limited to indoor space with the exception of designated concrete pads and parking areas? So, unless you're on the concrete pad or the other parking areas, okay, I get what you mean, okay.
So, that, I'm just asking you if you're okay.
Well, I just don't think we need to tell them how many.
Yeah, so why don't we just strike the first, the quantity, and say, all inflatable, all product?
Yeah.
Stored inside, yes.
That's going to be a little, until we get our actual Jump City building done, we're going to do like a lean-to-off, because that's where all of our white ones will go. As of right now, on the back slab, we put all of our wet ones, so all that water, until we get them cleaned, because we pick them up on, we pick them up on Mondays, Sundays, and Mondays, and then we clean Tuesdays, Wednesdays, weather permitting. So, what we do is, we take them out of the trailers, and we set them on that slab, because they're all wet, because they're wet-dry combos, and then we go clean them, then we put them in the warehouse, because if we put them all in the warehouse all wet...
So, let's say that when they're not being processed?
Okay.
They're indoors, so once you've cleaned and dried them?
Okay.
They're indoors. You're in the process of cleaning and drying, setting up, repairing, whatever that is, you can do that outdoors, they just don't stay out there once you're done.
Yeah.
So, we just put the terminology in there to say, once they've been processed, sanitized, and...
Okay.
And set up for the next usage, they stay indoors. That works.
Okay.
And then, we don't specify how many he has, as long as he keep indoors, more power to you. Thanks.
So, just a clarification, then, yeah, the intention of two regarding Tuesdays and Wednesdays was, you know, he's got all these bounce houses out back, and people are seeing this, just so that there's an understanding of what he's doing, I guess, in the record, but we can use the minutes for that.
So, again...
It was also...
The record is important, so I would say, as Mr. Thompson said, Tuesdays and Wednesdays, weather permitting.
Various.
Right, right.
Because that way, people say it's raining, and you're out there cleaning on Thursday, well, yeah, it's been a rough week. But this way, we have a record saying, the intention is, you get them back by sometime Monday, and you're cleaning, you're sanitizing Tuesday and Wednesday typically.
Yeah.
And if weather doesn't permit, we're not going to hold you to that.
Do we want to just make it easy and say, inflatables are set up on cleaning days? Because the whole intent is, we don't want them set up all the time, we have people jumping around on them up there. It's, because I'm just like...
I think, I think if you have it, because his schedule has been Tuesdays and Wednesdays, weather permitting, we find out that if we're not precise with our records, that some people come back later and say, okay, I'm picking a bunch of days for cleaning. So, it's right now, it's Tuesdays and Wednesdays, weather permitting.
Yeah.
And it covers what you've been doing.
Or we could have it more general and say, two days out of any given week, or something like that.
I just, I understand we're here today on some of these IUPs, and I don't know that we need to drill it down to this level and specify a day.
That's my move, basically.
Because it's like, things can change, and I don't necessarily need, we don't need them coming back saying, well, we added 30 more bounce houses, and now we need Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, because we added three more people, but we got five more trailers and 30 more bounce houses, and we need three days to process, not two.
Well, you can't add five more peoples.
Okay. I don't think we should specify days. We don't, I agree with Mary, we don't specify days for anybody else doing what they're doing.
Two days per week, then, is what you want, or nothing, or just...
Inflatables are set up for cleaning days.
Yeah.
And just for the record, that line item came from Mr. Thompson, it wasn't something that the P&amp;Z requested. He just said, your normal schedule, that's what you do.
Yeah, normally, that's what we do, 90% of the time.
So, we weren't nitpicking, he was just, he just captured what was normal. All right.
So, Mary made the motion.
Mary made a motion, Linda?
Seconded it.
Seconded it.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Questions, Mary's question. Share the changes, I'm trying to keep track of them.
I got all the changes, if you want, I'll just chat tomorrow.
All right, so Liz, you got the changes, you shared with Ellen. Anything else from the council? Saying and hearing none, we will vote on the motion to approve the interim use permit for the extended home occupation, Jump City Inflatables, 8766 Norris Lake Road, as amended. And Liz, you can send out that amended when you get it, or had Ellen send it out, so they can just see it. All those in favor of the motion, they signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good luck, thanks, Mrs. Have fun. Do well and prosper.
See you later.
That's that, 181st Avenue, Boss Street rezoning, a request for a work session?
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Planner Stockman.
Yeah, after the discussion at planning and zoning, I received some emails from Mr. Radamacher, he and I spoke, talked with Ms. Strike, and based on, well, normally, let me say, concept plans typically only go to planning and zoning, that is the defined process. There's no public hearing until you get to the preliminary plat stage. If, because a rezoning requires a four-fifths vote of the council, it's critical for, I guess, both parties to know whether they have support before they put in, you know, $4,500 and move the rezoning plat forward, not even mention the survey work and everything. So, if the council chooses to, they could schedule a work session, which is always public, open to the public, and could direct staff to, you know, share, share this with the surrounding areas. It should, you know, I guess it was stated in the planning and zoning packet, I don't know how many went and read that, but the, this proposal differs quite a bit from the previous proposal, in that there's 10 acres being requested for rezoning rather than 41. The previous proposal did not include the adjacent 100 acres for residential, so Mr. Radamacher is going to move forward either way with the residential portion, so in my mind, either way, it would be beneficial to have a work session, so everybody knows, you know, that we're on the same page, right? Otherwise, you know, his only other option is to just either abandon it or go to preliminary plat.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Greenberg?
So, Liz, are you saying that Mr. Radamacher is the one who put this forth?
Yes, absolutely.
This idea came from Mr. Radamacher, not from the council?
For, no, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so this was an idea being floated by Mr. Radamacher, that he sent it to planning and zoning to see if planning and zoning would bite.
Right, the way it works is, a property owner or any representative of a property can apply for a rezoning once per year. You have to wait a whole year if you've been denied, or you, you know, withdrew it or something, and before you can reapply. Mr. Raisler intends to sell the land to Mr. Radamacher, Mr. Raisler had to sign the application because of our city requirement and his responsibility as a property owner, but the intention there that there would be a transaction. So, Mr. Raisler had a representative, a builder that he's working with, that was in attendance at the planning and zoning.
Mr. Raisler or Mr. Radamacher?
I'm sorry, it's Mr. Radamacher.
That's, I'm sorry, Joel, did you have?
Yeah, so, thank you, Planner Stockman, I just wanted the audience to hear that, so they know where it came from.
I do think the, that is, can be one of the concerns, when people that were here four years ago, hear Raisler, and we got to make sure we don't mix those names up, because there's...
Yeah, that was a little slip-up, my apologies.
And the fact that he's still currently the owner, I'm assuming you're in process? So, that's, that's part of the concern, so.
And honestly, the fair thing to do, I mean, the residents really haven't seen what's proposed or heard what they're willing to do, so, I mean, in fairness, you know, to talk about it some more might be beneficial.
Well, you know, the unfortunate thing is, is we've spent a lot of time talking about transparency and openness, and the comments I've been hearing are, this makes like the opposite of that, that it came in as a concept plan, which typically it would, but knowing that four years ago, this was the largest crowd we've seen in this room in a decade, well, the reasonable thing would have been to approach it, understanding what we're asking, comp plan change, ordinance change, the impact of that, and certainly, if there's information that can be shared with the residents, I mean, that's, the unknown is what gets people going, you know, because they're used to, and again, it's the interchange of building names, Mr. Raisler still owns the land, what's really happening down there?
Well, that's...
And while you presented to the P&amp;Z, this is a different plan, there's still not enough details, I was looking back at Bob's notes here on advocacy, and when processing a zoning application, you cannot advocate a position until all information's been submitted. And the nature of a concept plan is, we don't have all information, it's very fluid at this point. We have some drawings that show two and a half to three and a half acre lots, a wet land, undesignated, and a commercial change which could impact other parts of the city. So, it would seem to be most effective to get that out into the public right away, saying, we're not trying to hide anything, this is exactly, I mean, you're not going to find somebody more straightforward than Mr. Radamacher. He's going to tell you what he's doing, and this is not what the residents have seen in the past, necessarily, not saying just this land, but in other situations. So, I think that that really is beneficial, then you can work with the planning and zoning, saying, here's the questions that have come up, how do we research that so we can make a good recommendation?
Mr. Mayor?
Short of that, you're going to find a lot of opposition that's maybe unnecessary. Planner Stockman?
We are in the concept plan stage, we haven't progressed, we haven't withdrawn, okay? So, remember, the concept plan is advisory only, we haven't agreed to one single thing.
And I don't disagree with that.
Right, but, so, but you're alluding to the fact that there's all these other things required, and everybody knows that, in the preliminary plat stage, I mean, but the intent is to talk about this, a concept plan, and force them to walk away with some indication of acceptance or not.
Well, the distinction, though, at the planning and zoning, you've got a nice packet here, but it doesn't address the specifics of our comp plan or our zoning ordinances that would have to be changed. And that, that never came up as discussion as a concept plan, saying, as a general rule, if you're doing 100 acres of residential, and the potential for 10 acres of commercial, that concept is one thing, but do you understand the consequence of spot zoning, and where that leads to other places in the city? And that never came up as part of, we just went through a very expensive update on our comp plan, and we have zoning ordinances that would have to be changed, and in doing that, would this change affect other similar portions in the city? High traffic count, somebody that's got a large piece of property that would benefit from a commercial development?
Right, Mr. Mayor?
And that's where I think the residents are saying, has anybody asked those questions? And during the concept plan discussion, those never came up.
Oh, yes, they did, they were in my presentation, you better...
Well, again, I went back through the presentation, but the planning and zoning never said, you know, you mentioned spot zoning in a paragraph.
Right, and the...
But they never said, what is the consequence of this, setting precedent for other spot zoning?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I spoke with attorney Rupi, and there really is no legal basis, I point-blank asked him, what is, because of the fact that there was a single property owner involved, and having heard the term before, yes, spot zoning, for the residents that may not have heard that term, is rezoning a property, you know, one property instead of a group of properties, for the benefit of a single owner, but you also have to weigh in the characteristics of the property, the location of the property on two arterial, or one arterial street on a major collector road, the degree of traffic at the corner, the decibels that somebody mentioned, as nothing, is really insignificant, based on the number of cars per day. So, what I'm saying is, you know, this, this can all be a... So, what I'm saying is, you know, this, this can all be addressed. Or if you're, if you want to ask for more specific details, you're very welcome to. But the whole intent of the concept plan, I mean, we're still in there. So, nobody should feel skirted. The ordinance and the state statute doesn't require a public hearing.
I, I understand that. And, and what I'm saying is, what's a reasonable thing in, in the light of the history of this particular property and this particular use that while it's not required by law, what makes the most sense to communicate to people openly that gets us the most support of a different idea? And, and again, you can say "concept plan", and it won't, the residents can come back for a public hearing when Mr. Rodamacher spent a lot of money. And, and I've seen that. I used to go to all the town board meetings and I'd, I'd hear it all the time. Boy, it should have been here before we spent all the engineering fees and everything. You're just a little too late to stop this and the steamrolling. And that's where the residents feel left out of the process. And I'm not saying it's legally required because it's a concept plan. You don't have to have a, a public hearing. The problem is, the residents heard about it at almost three o'clock at the night, there was a meeting at seven. And it's like, what are they trying to slip through? And it misrepresented the work that you've done, the work that Mr. Rodamacher's done, and, and directed the P and Z to look at simply a concept plan without asking the tougher questions on, "What does this mean to other places that have high traffic count on arterials and county roads?" Because we've got a lot of those in the city. "What does that mean to anybody else who wants to do the same thing?" It may not be an issue. But if we don't put that out in public discussion, then we're leaving the residents to wonder what, what actually is going on. And I'm just saying, if you want to get out ahead of that, be as forthcoming with the concept as we can. And then the questions that would come up before the money's spent to say, "What does this mean if we change the comp plan? And if we change our zoning ordinances accordingly, what does that mean elsewhere in the city?"
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
The planning and zoning weighed in on this concept plan. I'd like to weigh in on it. I think the rezoning should be not considered by the council. They should leave it as is. As the Comp 2040 Plan states, it is not zoned commercial. So, let's leave it that way. If we want to talk about the plating and those 2.5 acres plots and the heart, proposed park, we can talk about that. I don't want to talk about the first part because it's already stated in the comprehensive plan.
But if we have a four-fifths vote, we can change that.
Hang on, so Councilmember Alders?
Well, I'm just saying, this is the proposal. With the four-fifths vote, we could change potentially the comp plan to allow a ten acre commercial on the corner if we believe it has the right value for the city and meets some of the specifications that Liz says. So, I don't think you can just say, "No, I'm not going to do that." I think we need to discuss it and then we can decide how we want to move forward.
Okay, well, I stated my opinion, and I think you're sort of stating yours. Does anyone else want to weigh in on this? So, maybe we can move forward with this whole discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
You alluded to this. So, on the day of the planning and zoning meeting, I received, I was contacted by a resident asking why the P and Z agenda was not on the website. There was the Thompson IUP and then there were two concept plans. And I looked and it, the packet was not where it should be on the website. So, I contacted Lori and she said that it was on the website. It just hadn't been sorted. So, it was down at the very bottom under whatever the last year of meeting minutes are, 2018. So, she sorted it. So, whenever it was initially put on there, there was not follow-through to make sure that it got sorted and it was at the top. So, people, then, once it hit, and I'm not saying anything about what the proposal is, but the fact that it wasn't there till almost three o'clock the night of a meeting. And residents look at that and think we're trying to hide something. We are not, as, as it's been stated, every property owner has the ability to bring forward a comp plan amendment or an IUP or a CUP for their property. Whether it's appropriate or not is up to council's decision.
Right.
But when we don't provide the information to our residents in a timely manner, that does not bode well for us. I mean, tonight's meeting men, meeting agenda was not on the website until today.
It was the same situation.
Okay, yeah.
Same situation. And what happens, to clarify and to explain...
She didn't announce, she didn't give? Well, we all have to announce ourselves, so I just want...
The, what happened for me, and I'm assuming this happened with, with Lori too, with, with the other packet, was you do it. It takes a while for it. Sometimes it takes, I believe, the council packet took like an hour, hour and a half to upload. And so, you're doing other things and you forget to go back and that's a whole nother process, a whole nother step where you have to go to the bottom list and drag all the way up to the top.
So, that's, that's a separate issue. And I, I think that we, we want to address that. That how is, you know, how do we make sure that if something takes a long time to upload, it gets properly? Because again, you know, we, we continue to talk about transparency and openness and these kinds of issues fly in, in the face of that. Because the residents that are watching the website don't necessarily see that. And we got our packets last week. And they're saying, "Okay, now with the day of the meeting, I'm seeing some information." Because we got some other emails today on things that just showed up in the packet. How are we going to handle this? And, and in the same way, we want to be able to get back to staff with our questions, residents want to be able to weigh in other than coming to a meeting where it looks like things are being pushed through. And so, while I'm saying that it's, you know, legal is one thing, effective is another. And how do we effectively communicate? And how do we make sure? One is making sure that when we post public notices or we, we print packets, that the information is front and center. So, anybody looking electronically has that available to them. So, now, Councilmember Greenberg, I don't know, we kind of cut you off there. Did you have any?
Well, I, I, that is, to me right now, is the, the issue of transparency. And that, I believe, will affect how residents feel about this. And I think that's a disservice to the property owner that we weren't upfront. And apparently, you know, I, I don't know what the procedure is...
It didn't appear we were upfront.
No, well, we weren't. That P and Z meeting documentation was not on the website until three o'clock on the day of the meeting. That's not transparent. That's, and, and whether it, you know, I don't know what the process is in the office, but there should be follow-through. If I have to upload something on Monday, I need to check back to make sure that it's there so residents see it.
Mr. Mayor.
Planner Stockman.
May I ask what you might have suggested? Because, you know, I, I don't want to sound argumentative, but had we gone ahead and done something that wasn't verbatim by ordinance, what you've adopted, we also would have been reprimanded as staff. So, I'm...
As far as what?
I'm just, I'm saying, going outside the box in, in our established process for concept plan review.
Well, you know, I, I, I think that we, we need to learn to communicate proactively. We've been talking about communication quite a bit this year in the council and between council and staff. You were quite aware of the intensity of the meeting four years ago and the intensity of the discussions. And, and so, this is one of those where you say, "This is unusual." Because you're looking, we don't get a lot of requests for comp plan changes. And certainly not one that's this significant in that it would speak to potentially spot zoning. And so, we would have a comp plan change and a zoning ordinance change. And, and so, that's significant. And in seeing that, proactively, I would have said, "This might be something I want to put in a work session with the council." And then you can bring in the applicant. You can, and say, "What's the reasonable thing to do here? What can be revealed and what can't be revealed at this point?" And then I would, I would have proposed at the time that we have an open session with concerned residents. Here's what we know. Here's what we're thinking. Here's what that process would be. Here's what we're going to ask the P and Z to investigate and get back their research on these, these items. But knowing the sensitivity of this and, and the same residents that have been through this before, it's unusual enough to say, "What do we need to do?" We're not going to reprimand because you're just not out saying, "I'm going to run this meeting instead of that one." You come to the council and say, "How do we do this effectively? How do we engage, you know, all the right people, you know, all the stakeholders in this without derailing it?" Because what happens is, if people don't feel they're included, then, then again, the perfect storm is a concept plan comes up so there's no, no need for a public hearing notice to go out to the residents. They know nothing until shortly before the meeting that it's back. And, and they, they aren't going to necessarily know it's, it's completely different situation now that's back. But we could have headed off some of that animosity and, and the appearance of lack of transparency.
Mr. Mayor, I don't understand what you wanted her to do. You wanted her to come to us before the planning and zoning to get our input and then she moves forward with it? Is that what you're saying?
I, I would have said, in this case, it would have been worth a meeting with the council, yes.
I don't agree with that. I think that we, I don't care what the situation is. If we have protocol, why don't we stay with the protocol that we have for every situation?
Correct, we need to treat everybody equally.
Yeah, why is one person, one group or one person treated differently? I know your pastor talking about, but it's still a matter of equality that everyone is treated the same way and the same process that we have put down, that we're going to establish and live by.
Well, and, and if, if that's the case, maybe the council needs to decide that if you're going to come for a significant change, a change of the comp plan that we just spent thousands of dollars to approve, a change to the ordinance, the zoning ordinances, that potentially impacts the entire city or portions of the entire city, that, that might be one that says, "This is unusual enough, this should be the protocol." We don't have protocol to go back on this because we've never done it before.
Mr. Mayor, my confusion is that you, you want us to change protocol for this specific situation because of something that happened four years ago. Nobody's doing anything on this lie. It's still being done exactly how we do every, everything. There was a mistake that was made with the, getting the agenda on the, and that was a mistake. And everybody acknowledges it, Mary. But other than that, I don't see where anyone's made a, an error here other than doing what they've been told to do and what we've always done.
We haven't always done this. Show me another case where we've done this.
We haven't decided to do this. That's the whole, the whole point of what we're talking about is that nobody's decided this. We're still going to, we're, we're in the stages of just someone coming in and sharing. We might say to them, "This isn't going to work," and we all vote against it. Nobody's decided, I, I agree that if we have something this important and we decide to do it, yes. But nobody's decided to do anything. We're just, how, listening to someone present something, we might all say, "This does not go with our comp plan. This is not what we want to do." But the, but the individual has a right to just share his thoughts. And we can make a decision at that point. There's been no decision made here that we have to feel bad about or, uh, we're not planning on doing anything so far.
Mr. Mayor.
Planner Stockman.
Part of the intent of the concept plan is for it to be reviewed by staff so that we can weed out some of those things. And again, we don't want to skirt the planning commission's role in this process. I mean, they really, I thought, did a great job. And I thought it was admirable that they even fought to discuss it with you before moving it along. So, I'm, I guess, yeah, I mean, my opinion is that we're still in the concept plan. Let's involve the residents. They have no idea what the details are. Let's show them and, you know, and...
But that was my point.
Yeah, let's hear your, well, that's what, that's what the RCA was initially for. So, do you or don't you want to...
Well, that wasn't involving residents. This was, this was getting together with planning and zoning. There was no, nothing in the RCA that said, "That's an open meeting." It's an open meeting, but it's not a public hearing. They don't get to weigh in on it.
But she did say that you could notify residents when she presented it. I have had it announced.
It says that, where in the RCA?
Well, she stated that when she presented it.
I'm, I'm going off the record. And the record doesn't, doesn't say anything. Again, if the residents pick up this packet tonight, look at this packet tonight, there's nothing that says, "You're invited to a work session with, between the council and the planning and zoning to discuss a concept plan."
Yes, that should be...
And it's not a public hearing, so you can come, but you can't weigh in on it.
However you want to do it. We brought it to you for your input.
Mr. Mayor, that's good. You should have, the, the people that are going to be involved in this should be at that meeting to hear this before anything else.
So, looking for it? Councilmember Greenberg.
I think, it is my opinion that the residents, after four years, still feel the same way about that being spot commercial. So, if we want to talk about the development, plating, park, trails, yeah, um, so I'm for that. And maybe the residents would like to weigh in on that. But for me, the, the commercial and changing the comp plan, that's a, that's a no-go for me. So, if we remove that from this plan and we just talked about the plating for new homes with feedback from planning and zoning, feedback from residents, I would be in favor of that. But if we were to take some sort of a vote like they did in planning and zoning, they weighed in and then voted, I would vote that we separate the commercial district out of this whole process and it stay as it was.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
I, to, to Councilmember Greenberg, I understand where you're coming from, but I don't think we have the ability to say we only want to talk about this. If a resident has, has the ability to bring forward a request, we're obligated to have conversation on that request. How we feel or vote is, is up to us. But I do not believe that we can say no. We can only speak of one of the two things.
May I clarify?
Planner Stockman.
The council is not obligated at all to even necessarily discuss the concept plan. If you feel like you want to have that, be part of that advisory role in guiding this development, you can choose to do that. But we're not, you're not required. So, there's no formal decision on a concept plan, basically. But as a courtesy, you know, before the owner, the representative of the property spends all that money...
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
That's why I thought making our opinions known on it now at least would give Mr. Rodamacher an indication where we stand as long as it's a concept plan. Mr. Rodemacher an indication where we stand, as long as it's a concept plan. And it would let the residents know. So at least two parties would leave here tonight with some sort of progress being made.
Except that, pardon me, Mr. Mayor.
Hester Stockman.
Except that the residents still haven't been involved. So that was, we heard from a couple, that was their main concern. I mean, I, I'm grateful that you're willing to speak out, believe me. Yeah.
And it's, it's my contention that if it looks like we're trying to slip something by or any portion of the city, I mean, it's, it's always going to come back to the elected officials. But if it looks like something was, was slipping through planning and zoning and by the time it gets to the elected officials, money's been spent and we're, we're fairly down, we can be fairly down the road on this. And that's where people got frustrated in the past. It's like, okay, I'm frustrated, but now I can't do anything. I can't weigh in. And, and as you had said in some of your correspondence here, that it's a different plan than it was four years ago. And, and I don't think because of how it was presented and, and because the snafu with the posting on the website made it look like something's being slipped through, it didn't get the proper recognition or as being something different. And I think if, if we could do something that says, here's the proposal. Here's, here's the buffer that you're going to have. It's going to be all residential here. It's going to be park here. There's going to be buffer potentially around here. And people still say, I don't want anything to do with the commercial in that area. Ms. Rodemacher needs to know because he says in his letter, I need to know one area or the other. I don't want the commercial to derail the residential.
Mr. Mayor, I have an idea.
Okay, Hester Stockman.
What if you treated it, you know, like, we called it like a neighborhood meeting that we use that kind of a philosophy in our comprehensive planning for the plant, the big plan. But what if you were to use that in this type of a setting? You allow the city and you allow the applicant to make a presentation. We have boards set up. We have a slideshow. People can talk amongst themselves and ask questions or ask questions of this, you know, maybe that format would be nice to move, you know. And you can, yeah, you can call it a public hearing or a neighborhood meeting and so there's some...
You can call it an open house. Because then you don't have to have the, you know, the public hearing. You have to have 10-day notice and put it in the paper.
And that's not, that's not a deterrent, I don't think. It may be nice to have one by one come up and share just for the record. But at the same time, it would take a lot longer and they may not be able to interact as much with the applicant or...
Well, but, but see, I think if you structure an open house, and I'm willing to put in the time for it. I mean, yeah, it could be a long evening. But if, if you can communicate a letter to all the residents saying, there's going to be an open house on this date. And we have some coffee and cookies and come on up here, the concept will be laid out. You can interact. And then we'll sit down and have a input. Because I wouldn't want input before people got to see what the idea even was. That to me is the concern. Nobody knows what the idea is being presented. And then some of the key things, we take notes. What are the concerns going forward that need to be addressed by the planning and zoning? If it's spot zoning, if it's this, if it's that, whatever it is, we have a chance to collect ideas. Then the residents all get their chance. And, and there again, if they don't want to take it, then you've sacrificed your opportunity to weigh in. But if you, you know, if you get to weigh in and you can't make that meeting, but you can put a note together, send an email. But it gives people a chance to see something, kind of like we've been doing on the Highway 10 projects. Here's the concept plans. Tell us what you think.
Right.
Because I think if you have the right plan and the residents realize that, you have a whole different approach to where we go next.
So, Mr. Mayor, is an open house then not this formal? They don't have to be up at a podium and we don't, we're not always sitting here and stuff like that?
For recording, we would probably want to more formalize the speaking of the microphone so we have it on record. But typically at open house, you're going to have documents, you're going to have the maps, you're going to have the plan, the concept there for people to discuss. And then the applicant, if he chooses to participate in that, can answer questions.
Sounds good. Right.
He says, I'm tired of this silly city, and he can say that too.
I'm on to another city.
So, do you... So we think we're going to do an open house with a certain timeframe. We do allow enough time to respond, citizens to respond, and we'll have an open house for a period of time. And then we'll have a input session after that?
That has been a suggestion Liz made that I agree with.
And that would include the whole plan so that it doesn't appear that we're only going to talk about half of it?
I would think that makes sense.
Okay. I'd agree with that. I think that sounds like...
Because that's where you get the questions, what about this? If we mind thought about it, great.
I think you, I think it's a great, at least idea that we can at least share what the plan is before we have citizens coming up and saying, I don't want this, I don't want this. Or some citizens may want it without having a review of what we talk, what we're actually talking about.
Good.
But, but know what you don't want or want from facts.
Right.
Yeah, from data.
Not from history, not from...
Right.
Because, because it is a different situation than four years ago.
So...
Residents, you know, you know, I'm, I'm going to guess, residents are going to say, we've got a comp plan here. They spent tens of thousands of dollars on it. Answer some questions about it. And if they, if they had that, I want to give them the opportunity to speak. So if it's a long evening, it's a long evening. And again, now this, this is all contingent on you wanting to participate in this. So I'm not going to put you on the spot right now to ask, but that's...
I'll be here answering any questions anyone asks. Absolutely.
And can we put together, that's...
Oh, I don't see him.
And can we, you know, how quickly can we put together a presentation? It looks like you've got the documents in general. I, I have some questions as we, as I was looking through the comp plan that certainly we should address proactively because if anybody's reading this, they're going to have same questions I have. But we could include that as part of the presentation. And then we get a letter out to the residents and probably the same residents that, that were concerned last time, get it out, get it communicated, and then land on a hundred people being here.
I guess, yeah, I would suggest maybe around first of, first week in September or early September? Or do you want to try to, because we need 10 days, we need time to prepare it. Ms. Strike's gone, so we have, we got to coordinate dates somehow. Or if you want to have an internal meeting with, I don't know, I guess I could do an outline of what I think. There's a whole bunch of different ways we could handle it, but I'm...
Well, I, I think without rushing residents into a state of panic, I think the sooner the better. You know, I, you know...
My only thought was, pardon me.
The strike will be back on the 16th, gone again on the 19th. And if we push it out too far, we get back into the budget cycles.
When is she back after the 19th?
She'll be back next Monday, which is the 23rd. Again, I guess the question is, what needs to be in the packet and how quickly can that be put together so people have an idea of what's being proposed?
Well, there's an extra Tuesday in August, but it's right after, right after Labor Day would not probably be good.
Well, 31st.
We have a meeting, don't we?
Oh, you have a meeting that day?
I have a budget meeting that day.
14th of September?
That's a council meeting.
Council meeting?
7th is a budget meeting.
How about the first week in Septem, in September? What is that?
Seven?
7th is a budget meeting.
What's happening the 24th?
Oh, P and Z.
P and Z.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raina.
To Ms. Stockman, what is, do we know what is currently on the August P and Z?
P and Z, well, don't hold me to it, but I believe we have a concept or possibly a minor subdivision, three lots.
There's a lot of stuff backing up on P and Z.
Yeah, but some's just like, might fizzle out, that kind of a thing.
Is the concept plan off of Viking, Old Viking still coming through?
Uh, yes, that concept plan on Old Viking may be for residential split. Then we have the 181st. Further down, there was a three-lot split residential. And there could be one other thing, but I, at this, well, no, because we're past the, we're past the date. So there's only those two possibilities most likely.
There's no public, there's no public hearings.
There's no public hearings.
So you've known that already.
Do we have to have it on a Tuesday?
Not now.
Well, so, so what, what about this? Can those two concept plans, how critical are they for the 24th?
Yeah, I think those would be fairly quick reviews.
Well, I was just saying, you can't, you can't do a workshop. If we're going to open it up for an evening, we got to open it up for an evening.
I think we may be catching some people on their way home from work. Does that make any sense? I mean, like, I don't know, six to eight or something like that? Or is that, or do you want to start at seven?
No, I, I think we commit to being here. You'll be here, whatever it takes. So we commit to being here, you know, at least 6:00. I don't know if we want to start earlier than that, but, um, and if we have to take till 9:00, we take till 9:00.
What day are you talking about now?
20 to 10 right now.
I'm confused. What day?
Uh, they didn't really say.
They didn't say. The question, the question was, with what's on the docket for P and Z on August 24th, is that time sensitive? It's two concept plans.
Yeah, the one, the one, yes, the one party would be upset if we delayed it.
Okay.
Uh, the other maybe not, but, uh, and that, yeah. And that really wouldn't work because you were thinking of just delaying them a month.
Would it happen in an hour?
What about the 26th? That's Thursday.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, a Thursday.
Does that work at all?
I'm open.
More, you know, Mondays.
Are we talking about August? You're saying August, right?
I'm still looking at August.
August 26th.
Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raina.
The 26th, I will have to try to find somebody to take a commitment that I have that night from 4:00 to 11:00.
What's your 23rd look like?
4:00 to 11:00.
23rd, the Monday? I'm open.
On the 23rd?
Yep. Well, hold on, I can't. If, if I can get the public hearing notice in the paper tomorrow morning.
But without having a public hearing? It's an open house.
Well, or just an open house, but it's basically...
Do you still have to get that in there?
Don't you want to advertise it? Or do you, how are you going to notify residents?
Does it need to be in the paper or just letters sent out?
I had to say, letter sent out.
You're just thinking letters, okay.
For the neighbors.
If you can get an article in the paper, that'd be great. Because the, the more public this is, the better. But I think the city needs to send out letters to as broad an area down there as possible. Because we're really looking for, for positive, respectful input.
Is this publication something the city's going to cover the cost of?
Yes, it is. Well, I'm, I'm sorry. I assume since we're asking for it, that we would, council, cover the cost of those mailings.
And the publication in the newspaper?
If the council agrees. Again, we're, we're putting the extra step forward because we want it to be public. It's not something the applicant is required to do.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raina.
I, I guess I would ask council to consider also having staff put out the blue land use signs. Where?
It's on the application, in front of the council.
If council doesn't want to...
I think it's okay.
Put the notice out, then that's fine.
Again, if you're trying to be as open as possible, I think they're effective. They're saying, what's going on?
You're talking about this right now?
We're having an open house.
We're talking about right now. Okay.
And, and so we have the cost of letters, the cost of publication, and the cost of Ms. Stockman's time in preparing this. Is the council willing to pick up those costs?
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Alders.
I don't, just don't totally disagree with you, but if just process-wise, do we think some residents are going to think, oh, my gosh, this thing is going to get like, hit some public hearing if we put those blue signs out?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raina.
To Councilmember Alders, I don't know what residents will think, but it gives them the ability to know that something is going to, is being considered.
On that corner.
On that corner, and there's the phone number for them to call the office, and the office can explain.
Go to the website and see, open house, you discuss the concept plan.
Don't want it to look like, here it comes.
We've already decided.
Sorry, I've been decided.
Yeah, I don't want that.
Well, we've had a XXX sign there before.
Yeah, last time we had a XXX sign.
Mr. Mayor asked a question. Is there? Grant Rodemacher, Bill Supretts, Rodemacher Companies. Um, this started with P and Z and they were seeking involvement from the council. So now I'm confused. Is P and Z now out of this or are they going to be invited to this workshop session?
They're invited to the open house.
Okay, okay. Because I wanted to make sure they weren't being excluded.
No, no.
Because we had a lot of positive comments.
I, I would hope that they would be there too.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Don't want them making their decision in a vacuum either.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Clinton would like to say one thing.
Play it again. Just four years ago, we had where you could email. So like the Boomer Mill or what have you is different than absolute fact. Especially you're hearing that it's a new concept plan. That'd be real helpful where we were able to just give our emails and we get all the planning and zoning information and all those packets as well as the city council, because I was able to sign up for both. Now, apparently, you're not able to do that anymore because I don't oversee them anymore. So whether I have to come to the office or print out a packet or the website, that type of thing, just to know fact rather than a neighbor that comes down the street and, hey, did you hear about... It's the Boomer Mill. You know what you're talking about.
However, we're hoping that by putting it on the website, and certainly all of our phone numbers are public information here too. I always ask people, go directly to the decision makers. But the key is to get the accurate information fully disclosed on the top part of the web, city website. And that's the most consistent we can be at that point. I'm not sure what happened to the email list. I know we had some legal problems with it in the past. So we, we haven't been doing that lately, so...
Mr. Mayor.
Hester Stockman.
So I'd be glad, you know, to include the, the staff email, both me and the in-office staff, as well as including a copy of the concept plan itself with the letters, okay? So you can at least see the layout of the streets and such. And then you're either...
I think that's wonderful. It just, you know, for people, it's a fact rather than...
And if people can't make it...
Things blow up and...
Yes.
Why people...
They, they, they at least will know there's a meeting. If they can't make it, they can still weigh in. They can look at the, at the concept plan and say, here's all I feel about it. It's not as bad as I thought. Better than I thought, or I still don't like, but at least they have facts in front of them. And that's really what we're trying to do. I mean, we beat the horse here on the, on transparency and openness, but that's what we're trying to communicate. Not, not anybody come back and say, boy, I had no idea. If you have no idea after this, you just were trying to avoid any information. Because we're trying to make sure people know.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, did we ever decide on a date?
23rd.
Now we're, we're looking at the 23rd. Councilmember Alders?
Or the 30th. Actually, Labor Day is not until, I was mixed up on that. The 30th.
30th is, you know, if, if we can...
Or the 23rd.
23rd.
If I can't make it, it still can go on.
We want to do it at 6:00 or 7:00?
6 to 8 or... Yeah. I think that's okay. Present for 20 minutes?
If the people want to keep weighing in, we'll stay here till the last one gets their opinion expressed.
Okay, 23rd.
The formal portion of that will be 6 to 8, and then we can, if it's going slow, we'll take questions early. You know, again, if people want to keep asking questions, we'll stay here until the questions are done.
Do we need a motion?
Uh, we will.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raina.
I know that we, uh, the council hosts...
The council hosts an open house on Monday, August 23rd, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. At the Northern Historic Town Hall to have... receive resident input to a conceptual plan for the corner of 181st and Bow Street. I second that.
Do we need to include the approval of the funds for the mailing in the newspaper?
I will include that the city council has agreed to accept responsibility for the billing for the publications, Liz's time, and the notice in the newsletter, and that also staff is directed to put out the blue land... Blue land use signs. I amend my second.
So we have motion to second. A land use sign, where do you want them? On the corner of Bow and...
I...
101st?
I would recommend that one is on Bow and one is on 181st.
We only have four signs.
And what other ones are out at this time?
I don't know.
Oh, was there one at the inflatables?
Can we just put it at a angle if we're short on signs? I'll just... we'll have to reevaluate.
We can get two signs. That's one on Bow and one on 101st. And if not, I don't... are there any land use signs currently?
Well, we can take the one from Mr. Thompson's place. So I think we'll be okay. We've got... there's...
Everything else is concept right now.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's do the two of them there, as soon as possible. And then, what is the letter gonna say?
Pardon me?
What's the letter gonna say?
Uh, the letter is just going to say, "For consideration of a concept plan for future development."
For potential future development.
Potential future development. We'll just show acreage. We'll include a copy of the... You know, I can... we can clarify how much of that is residential, how much is proposed as commercial. I can show the... include the map on the... from the land use plan, so they know what the change would be. And then, um...
Public invited for discussion.
Yeah, input.
Some to that effect, so they know that they can speak up.
Short presentation, discussion, and question.
Good.
Something like that. Is that...
I think it'd... you know, this would require, obviously, a change in the comp plan and change in the... So they know that that's part of the discussion.
Okay, I'll let you look at it. How's that?
Sounds good. Any other questions or comments? Are you good?
I'm good.
All good? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Are you gonna try to... try to continue here, or you're about...
So let's take a look at our... What's critical for tonight? Accessory building clarifications, is that...
That would be fairly quick. And the moratorium would be very quick.
All right.
Then I would recommend waiting on... Well, actually, F, item F, would be fairly quick too, and then we could wait on E.
It may or may not be.
Well, just as far as, you know, who we want to include and that kind of thing.
Um, to my knowledge, there's no meeting... well, we'll get to that. So let's go on to the accessory building clarifications. Whose blue ink is this on the draft?
That's my... this kind of comment.
So...
Just so you understood.
This does not make sense. How can... So who created this?
It's not intended to be the changes to the ordinance. It was just intended to be my comments on what the issues were. So if that was confusing, I apologize.
I thought maybe somebody had... you had put it out as a draft, and this was somebody else's comments.
No, that was my... those are my comments. What do I do with it? And... So what's confusing is, is it states that if your home is closer than... So our front is set back to the center line is 120 feet for local roads. It says, "If your home is closer than that required setback, you're allowed to put a structure in the front yard up to 800 square feet." Well, A, it doesn't make sense the way it reads. And B, um, you know, is that something we want to look at for the whole community? Because if you've got a small lot and your house is way up front, doesn't make, you know... It just doesn't make sense to me. Here it is. I'll get it, thanks. So, in looking at... I don't, you know, this goes back to township days. So I don't know if, um... If there's any recollection or any minutes on what, you know, what the intent was here, because...
All right, so that being said, we've got a whole bunch of things to talk about quick. Can this wait?
You can wait, or I can...
Because it...
Yeah, it can wait.
I don't want to do a disservice. I don't want to pass something that we don't understand, so...
Okay.
Go back to township days. I say that we table this one.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I agree with tabling it, but can we ask Liz to do a synopsis of what it is she's trying to do?
If, well...
This is unusual. This, when you say, "It doesn't make sense," you can...
Okay, so it's...
Make a recommendation of what you think it should be.
Not right now. Table it for next time.
Got it.
But you give us better background as to what is...
Got it.
What we're trying to do here. What's wrong? What are we trying to do?
Yes.
All right, so we're tabling this?
And a motion to table.
Mr. Mayor? I did a little research on the motion to table and on Robert Field of Order, and it's not arguable, if you're correct.
Not debatable.
Right. But it's still, it needs to be voted on by...
Yes.
But the last thing that it didn't, it was... it was a motion.
So no, this is a motion to table. It's not debatable. And they don't need seconds, so... All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion table. Ordinance table. And Liz, you'll get back to us with what you're recommending here.
Yeah, I may just take a stab at clarifying it for starters, and then go from there.
All right, interim ordinance. We have two of them there. 2021-03 and 05. I think we want to be looking at 05, which isn't designated in. So page... It says 2021 dash nothing. That should be 05.
Uh, we think it's 05. We have... I'll just need to verify the number.
Yeah, okay. Whatever that is, it's the one with the blue ink and the blue font.
Mr. Mayor?
Lanter Stockton.
So, right, if you recall, Ms. Rainville had a question sort of near the end of this discussion last month about whether we could amend it to include that separation issue that we'd like to discuss. And so Attorney Rupi was... is and was... I was fine with that. So, yeah, we just amended it to include that. So we will, in essence, just adopt another moratorium which includes that. We don't really need to, but if you want to be clear, clarify it per the motion from last time. We can just move forward that way.
We want to be clear.
Definitely want to be clear. So, but we had the moratorium, so there was no development allowed within C1 or I1. The point of Mr. Rupi's email was, is that you can go in at that time and change anything related to the, you know, change your ordinance as you will in any section, not just those sections.
I think the thing that helps is when you... when you put... gives us the planning and zoning, this clarifies exactly what we're looking at.
You want a cover memo? Or something?
I want... I want this resolution that says it includes the separation of similar-like businesses. Portion of the addition to the moratorium. So do we need to... Since it wasn't in the original moratorium, do we have to vote on this one then?
Yes. You should adopt this revised one if you want it to be included.
All right. And you'll come up with the... We talked about before, the cover letters, the types of things we're looking for as far as architectural, as far as...
Well, right, how do you want to move forward on that? If you recall, a while, a few months ago, I prepared sort of a packet of discussion items related to architecture. I had pictures of all the buildings in our city.
I think we had talked about, um, parking areas, loading areas, buffer zones. So I think if you have that in a packet that we can look at and discuss at our next meeting and say, "Here's... here's what we're trying to identify."
How to refine some of this, okay.
Because I, again, I was looking through the comp plan, and we do some of that fairly well in the comp plan already. But we just have to capture it in the... in the ordinance section.
Right, okay. So I'm...
Aspirational statement here, we got to codify it.
My gut feeling is, simple to the point, included in the ordinance. We don't need a thick book of architectural standards like some cities have. Is that kind of what I'm...
No, just so that we know the things that have not worked well in the past, that it's detailed enough to keep that from happening again, but not so detailed that discourages anybody from ever wanting to build here.
Okay.
And a happy medium there. It's not a book, but it's clear guidance.
So you're not necessarily after sort of this Main Street look, right?
Well, again, if you go back to our town center concept in the comp plan, we are.
Okay.
But since we've broadened it out to be outside of city center, I think we just have to be careful that we're not making every building everywhere in the city look like city center. I do think Main Street deserves that discussion. What does the city center look like going forward?
So you can establish a zone, you know, like a district.
Yeah.
That's what you call it, district. Okay, I'll work on that. Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion to approve this ordinance, 2021 dash whatever it's going to be?
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Councilmember Alders.
So we just looked at a proposal that has some industrial implications on it. So if we approve this, does that mean that thing is automatically tabled for a year?
Tell the moratoriums off.
Mr. Rattimer? There is an out in the moratorium. If you're... if they bring architectural plans to you which you feel meet the intent of our, you know, that we've discussed between now and whenever he submits, there isn't an exception to the moratorium that you can... he could ask for. If he's really in a hurry. Chances are, I don't... I do not believe it'll be in the ground this year anyway.
No, in a letter, Santy was talking about sometime 2022, but he's...
Yeah, spring, I'm guessing.
Probably looking at the corner of Oak Grove first, so... I'm just...
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
Yeah, that's page two, section four hardship.
A waiver.
All right, so except a motion to, uh... Move this ordinance, this revised ordinance, to include the separation of similar businesses.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I would move the ordinance number 2021-5, which is an interim ordinance placing temporary moratorium on all new commercial and industrial development within the C1 and I1 zoning districts in the city as amendment.
Second.
I second it.
All right, we have Councilmember Rainville motioned. Councilmember Blake seconds. This says, "Study of separation of similar or like businesses." Does that still include if we wanted to have a limitation on how many of the like businesses? This is separation, but it doesn't really say... It doesn't address if we didn't want to have 16 Halloween shops in town. They just have to be separated apart.
No, you can't... you can't... Oh, well, yeah, you can define spacing, but you can't prohibit them.
So like we talked about, discussion of storage units.
You can define spacing, but you can't have an ordinance prohibiting storage units within your industrial zone.
I'm sorry, I'm out of order, but you've cleared it from moratorium.
Well, that's where we're at temporarily.
Yeah.
What the question was is if they can separate uses long-term. So, you know, you... Um, yeah, any use, whether it's cars, storage units.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
Liz, a long time ago, it may have predated all of us. Someone, uh... someone brought it up to the council to stop pornography shops...
From opening up in now then?
Oh, XXX, yep. We have a sexual...
Yeah.
We've got a... it's in our ordinance.
It's very graphic, and it's descriptions too. What you can and can't do.
There you go.
And where you can do it.
So to some degree, it can be... you can determine...
You can't prohibit those either, but there's a radii radius from schools, churches, and other sensitive type uses.
So they put conditions on it, making it unfavorable.
Correct. Making it difficult to locate, right. Put up another church.
Wow, that's good. That's like a 15-year-old question.
Well, believe it or not, you know, my boss, Dan, his fa... I worked for his father, David Lick, and was involved in Ramsey down on 10 when that whole deal started. David Lick was instrumental in getting those adult use regulations adopted, so... And back in, way back, 1990, when I started in the planning profession, that was one of my first assignments, was to work on a project with David, so...
It was... it was big when we were in township, because they were looking for small communities like ours that didn't have regulation, and they just...
Pop up.
Pop up, and people came from all around, and so it was... And it cost Ramsey a lot of money. All right, so we voted on that one, didn't we?
Yep, did we vote?
No. So all those in favor of the motion to approve the ordinance 2021, with whatever number it is, we think it's 05, with the updates on separation? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, how about responsibility matrix? Can that wait?
Yeah, all that can wait.
So, motion to table the responsibility matrix, development review process, and responsibility matrix.
And all the checklists that go with it can wait if you...
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Don't need a second on tables.
You don't... you said there was not a second. Don't need a second.
Don't need a second on tables. All right, DOA.
Mr. What's the date we have our meeting?
Well, we canceled that meeting, because at the last council meeting, we hadn't decided what we were doing. We didn't know what they wanted the meeting for.
Okay.
And it didn't include other principles, and so that meeting is...
Tabled.
Tabled until somebody takes hold of this. Now, my understanding was Lori was going to be... wanted to be involved in this, and she'd be putting together some type of process. The... So I think there needs to be an understanding of what... What the stakeholders are looking for here. You know, in item two, Liz, you're saying the overall objectives, which will lead toward a set of conditions that will govern operation of a school at the Barnum Facility under conditional use permit. I think we're pretty mature, because we haven't even found out what DOA... I think we're very premature because we haven't even found out what DOA and DHS, they haven't settled their differences yet.
Okay, but.
And until we know what DHS is going to hold them accountable to and what they are going to do, as we heard tonight, we have nine more calls this month. It's not getting better, and I'm, I don't think, again, council can decide, but I don't think the council wants to pursue a school or expansion of operation when they can't tell us what they're going to do to control what they're doing already. And DHS has cited them, and they've challenged that citation, or those citations. So I, I think we need to have an understanding, and as I look at the names on here, Hennepin County, Sherburne County, Carver County, Ramsey County, the people that are placing out here need to be aware of what's going on. So I think that right now, one, the August 9th meeting, to my knowledge, is off. I don't have it on my calendar anymore. I told them after our last meeting that until the council came to a conclusion, we're not having any more meetings. Tend of date for a larger group, we have to determine what that large group wants, and then you can pick who's going to be there. But I think that if DOA and DHS and the county officials that are placing, and the county officials that are paying sheriff's fees, until all these parties get together and say, here's our questions, here's what it's going to take to prove you can handle this. A slow month is not good enough if we're back to nine calls this month. Something's still not working. So if they want a school, they need to come and say, here's what we've done to improve things, and come holding hands, in my opinion, with DHS and say, we're all on the same page, we think we deserve to be able to expand. That's my opinion, the council can weigh in accordingly.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rayburn.
I would agree with that. I'm not interested in moving forward anything until we understand what we have now. And with this, I, I mean, our, that aside, are we hosting this meeting? Who's, because the mayor just said, unless I heard him incorrectly, that, well, the 19th is canceled, Lori's out. But, I mean, who's hosting this? And is the purpose to try to get them a school when we don't know what's going on already?
Ms. Raydenville, or Mr. Mayor?
Planners Stockton.
So last month, I just briefly, we briefly talked about the city being the one to try to coordinate the meeting so everybody's on the same page. I was trying to move it forward and not let it get dropped between the cracks. So I realize it's a big tax, task, but DOA could come in tomorrow with an application, and then we're going to have to jump around like monkeys to try to get this, you know, put together. Let's try to meet with some of these parties and figure it out. I mean, somebody's got to be in charge. Nobody's in charge. You've got 10 different, you know, I'm just saying how, it's very difficult, I get that. But I don't think it's going away, and I don't think just sitting and doing nothing is going to help.
I don't mean to be disrespectful, but everything we've done with DOA over the years is like nailing Jell-O to the wall.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know.
And I think if you want to get things moving forward, let's get DHS and DOA connected, because right now DHS finally came in, did their report months ago, and DOA is stalling them. Or I don't want to accuse them of stalling. They have contested the findings, and here we are in July with nine sheriff's calls.
Okay, so how about if you're okay with it, I'll call the DOA attorney, get his point of view, try to just figure out where they're at. What are they thinking? What are they?
I would like to know what DHS is thinking. They're the ones who filed the findings.
Well, that too, from this Paula Halberson.
Yeah.
She was the head gal.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rayburn.
Permission to speak pointedly.
Yes, sir. It's a member you're on camera.
Um.
Use your church language.
No triple X stuff.
Uh, I think Liz had a good point where she said they could come in tomorrow with an application for a school. And in my opinion, we're not really repaired, prepared to respond to that.
No, we are, we can say no. Just because they apply doesn't mean we have to approve it.
Sure.
Well, right, but you still have to do your homework and.
This is, this is where I'm going with the homework part. We, we should have some requirements in place from the city that state exactly what we would expect. Here's where I want to be farmish. So things like, you know, a facility that's a lockdown, they keep, if the residents keep escaping, like in today, he said four were escaped and two assaults just this past month. So we say from the city standpoint, CUP, school, whatever, it has to be a lockdown if we're going to approve the school. We come up with things from the city standpoint that are at least nailed down. And I don't know where this fits in with the, with RUPI and things like that, but at least we're ready. So if they did just say, we just need to move forward. When I read that one letter of invitation from them, there was so much political spin on that baby. I was spinning. But the mayor or the sheriff's department determined there was no traction, so they took efforts in their own hands. And then getting that investigation by the DOH was great. So now we have some firming. So we could use that and what the sheriff did as allies in firming up some concrete requirements if there were an application.
Well, the attorney's opinion that right now, they're already in violation because they expanded the program without notifying the city or getting any updated CUP or IUP. By bringing in, in this other program from Minnetaka, it's listed on here now. He said they're already in violation. So the attorney's got a pretty good handle on what minimum he's thinking we need to have. The sheriff would have input saying, you know, one of the problems is, for whatever reason, DOA and DHS don't show up at the same meeting at the same time. And then one of them says, we can't touch any of the residents. And the other one says, we don't agree with that. We're the licensing agency. But DHS is the licensing agency, but they don't deal with the day-to-day operations either. They're just saying, here's what you can do, here's what you can't do, and the rest of this is still in this gray area. And without those people being in the same room at the same time saying, hold up, you just said this, which disagrees with what she just said, you two come to a consensus, because we can't do anything.
Well, I.
You guys keep changing gears.
Sure, great, but I just see that as more unproductive meetings. If at least we're covered on our end with RUPI's help to make sure what we're requiring as a city for a IUP or CUP or new building, a school or whatever, in this particular capacity, not a normal school, this is not a normal school in my estimation. Addressing these issues brought up tonight, four escapes, two assaults, no lockdown, no lockdown, that bemystifies me. If it were a lockdown, then at least it would address the residents' concerns, resident issues, cars being taken, people escaping, assault, those could be addressed by that lockdown, and it'd be required in an IUP, CUP, whatever. That's where, that's all I wanted to say, is that we were prepared, because I think up until now, it's, all the efforts have been unfruitful because they are master wordsmiths.
Mr. Mayor.
Planners Stockton.
Well, maybe the question is, does, is the city council interested in moving forward and pursuing the possibility of revoking the CUP? You know, I mean, is doing.
Well, of course, we've had that discussion, but nobody knows where it is, so we don't know what to revoke.
Well, exactly, but, so I'm just saying, we now have some proof that they've changed, you know, well, we have proof.
Okay, so, so let me suggest this. We engage attorney RUPI to, like we're doing on the default matter on the roads, say, because we now know that you're operating outside of, whatever your CUP was originally, you have changed it in the past year. You're now in violation. As a city, what can he do to shut the operation down? Because that will bring everybody to the table.
That will be.
Right, so as the council, we want to engage Bob Services to, to formally, you know, inform DOA that we have grounds to shut them down.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rayburn.
If that is a motion, I will be happy to second it.
It's a motion.
I am happy to second it.
What discussion do we have?
Mr. Mayor.
Ramifications.
I, I, I think if we don't move forward in a bold, you know, bold manner, we're going to be dealing with this forever.
Right.
And so, you know, an attorney's letter tends to get people's attention. And the business wants to operate, so they're going to have to respond to that, and they're going to have to meet with us. At that time, then, we can have the parties together, but if Bob puts together a you're-done letter, I think that's the way to go.
Mr. Mayor.
Would, would, so that Bob has some direction, because I've been involved in this for 13 years. Would the council approve me working with Bob on that letter?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rayburn.
I would, and I would also, taking consideration my comments of if that didn't work, and they still applied, that we have something in place, and they applied for the school, that would at least, because I see the school as only expanding the issues, not as curing them. I think they may think that it's curing it. Well, if we educate them, they'll stop being bad. I see those as being another unlocked unit, and it'd just be getting worse. So at least we can be able to address that third and final, that RUPI think of ramifications.
There's a reason that's called a God's transits.
Yeah, because whoever their legal counsel is will be certainly ready or will respond, so.
I think they'll respond on, send us the CUP outline where we're out of conformance.
Right, they have somewhere. Mr. Mayor.
Planners Stockton.
I was going to say, I think all that attorney RUPI is going to need at the onset is just for me to give him an outline of what those historic violations are, and then what that, you know, when that new program.
Okay.
So, and, you know, you can certainly.
If we think it'll move us up where we are today, I'd say we move forward.
All right, and does that include Liz sending Bob the information and me working with him on it?
So Liz is going to send him the information, you're going to work with Bob on it because you've had the most background. Bob's going to send him the letter.
All right, that's the motion.
Second it, I agree it, amending it.
All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. You guys got a letter that I sent to Lori. Turns out when we closed our meeting in July 20th to talk about Eric's wage adjustment, that is not by statute and allowed the reason to close a meeting. I looked through the mayor's handbook, I found what they listed as acceptable for closed meetings. I called the league. They agreed that was not, but they said as the league policy is, talk to your attorney. Attorney RUPI said closing a meeting for the purpose of discussing, discussing wage adjustments would be a violation of the open meeting law. He stated the request to close meeting must reference the appropriate state statute and provide the specific reason for closing a meeting. He stated he is to be contacted before closing meetings in the future, so he can provide the specific verbiage required, because he has to quote the state statute and specifically say what we're discussing at the meeting. He said, while we didn't intentionally violate open meeting laws on the July 20th, we still need to acknowledge the error at our next council meeting, which is today, and post the recording of the closed session, as we do with all other public meetings, as soon as possible. So we are acknowledging that we inadvertently closed a meeting that shouldn't be closed. It was not intentional, but the records will be open to the public, and the meeting will be posted online as soon as this can be done. Anybody with any questions on that? And the league handbook does have a list of all things that must be closed and things that can be closed. Anything else has to be open to the public. All right. So, Councilmember Rayburn, your policy and procedures for notifications, is that critical now or can that wait? Since we have no.
Well, I would just ask council to, I'd like to pass it, but I would ask council to read through my RCA and, and I brought it forward, again, based on transparency with our residents. So if you have any questions, send them to Lori, and Lori can send them to me, and I can address them. But I would ask that Dennis goes on the September agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Planners Stockton.
I have just a couple of comments, Mary. I was trying to find the, well, actually, I think it was in August of 2020 and not July of 2020, in your first statement, that city council directed residents, that council receives a copy of letters to residents. I could not find posted any minutes, agendas, or any documentation that this RCA that you have listed for September of 2020. I was trying to find the exact language, because my recollection of the way it's worded here, I think, was a little different than the way it was discussed previously. So I don't know if in the meantime, we can find that original RCA.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rayburn.
You know, I was going to attach it, but I didn't.
Oh, okay.
But I will provide that information, because what I have here is taken from what was in some council minutes.
If you could provide those minutes, that'd be great, because I tried to look and I couldn't find them.
All right, so that will be tabled to September?
Yep.
So please look through that, send your comments, and Lori to send to council. It'll be quick in September. You've seen my request here. I don't know what the cost would be, don't know, other than the Rogers Lake area is going to have all new roads. The area from the south leading into Rogers Lake has crater-sized potholes. The Herkium Street cul-de-sac has crater-sized potholes. So residents in that area have been calling and saying, I understand how you want to wait for our neighborhood until Ramsey does what they're doing. Is there any way the city can patch these holes before winter? And I'm thinking if you're leading into this brand-new road system in the area, coming over the surface of the moon, that's probably not a good idea. We invested in a wonderful hot patch trailer. I'm not sure between Randy and Eric what the timing is right now. But I would like to request that before the winter season is upon us, that the city staff finalated it down and patched Waco, Ventry, Herkium, and then check on Uranium. I wasn't able to drive that one.
Blutonium.
Waco, Ventry, what was it?
It's Fort Brooke Estates, second edition, Koala Hills, and then Waco and Ventry. It's Fort Brooke Estates, second edition, Koala Hills, and then Waco and Ventry, leading into the Rogers Lake area. Ventry is V-E-N-T-R-E. All right, so I move my motion to have staff patch those before winter. I have a second. Have a second from Councilmember Alders? Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as presented?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. You want to discuss the communication meeting?
Well, I, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Blake.
We've talked often about having a communication meeting for council and staff to talk about better communication between us, because it comes up so many times at our meetings. I just think, yeah, we should set a date, and maybe tonight's not the night, everybody's tired, and we've already put in a lot, yeah, we've been in a lot of meetings, but we can't, I don't want this table and forgotten again, because we've talked about this so many times, and we don't seem to do anything.
If we table it, then it goes to the next meeting.
Good, good deal. That's all I wanted.
So now, motion to table?
You bet. I motion that we table this communication meeting for council and staff.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to table. I had discussion on upcoming road, county, state road projects, probably want to hear it this time of night. I would pay attention. Residents will be probably, this will be pushing even more for internet out here, because for the next four to six years, you're not going to be able to move. Highway 10 will be new bridge over the river, new bridge over Highway 10 at Ferry, elimination of stoplights through Anoka this next year, '21 through '23, elimination of stoplights in Ramsey in '24 and '25. 169 will be eliminating stoplights, that's a multi-year project. Because of that, the county has originally planned to concrete Boss Street from 22, from Old Viking South to 181st, and from Viking going west to our border. They have put that off to the '25, '26 year, they're going to concrete it, make it look like this road out here with shoulders, that's now been pushed out to '25, '26. This, this coming year, they are going to do an inch and a half overlay on Boss Street, because they're anticipating with all the construction on 10, and 169, we are going to be the bypass.
I was thinking, what?
So they're just going to patch it up, and then in two to three years, they're going to rip it all up and start over. Right now, they are in discussion with the state on turning 22 over to the state and taking 47 south, but the condition of 47 south, they are not recommending they do anything on 22 until 47 south is fixed. So that's, that's on hold.
Wow.
Cleary, you know, we had a discussion, they were going to update Cleary, and they've been having trouble getting right-of-ways and ditched work. So right now, in this next year, they're going to, I'm sorry, and next year, they're going to look to blacktop it, to overlay, and in 2023, they're going to reclaim an overlay from 47 up to 22, and they're going to widen the shoulders three to four feet, but they have to get all the right-of-way taken care of. So people are wondering what's happening on Cleary, nothing until 2023. At that point, north of 22, they're going to simply do an overlay on it, up to 24.
They're going to overlay Cleary?
They're going, they're going to reclaim an overlay between 47 and 22 in '23. In 22 north, they're going to overlay.
Okay, okay.
Simply. So I would, I would pay attention, because there's going to be a lot. This year, they'll be doing everything from Mississippi River on Ferry all the way up to Bunker. So there's going to be a lot of construction going on.
No.
So we can table, I would like to discuss, this map is decades old, if we can get an updated map here in the fire station and city offices, please find out what the cost would be and who will do that. And then, last year, we had talked about doing an ordinance requiring developers to provide in-ground conduit for the internet, or the city paying for it and leasing it back to internet providers. We need to make that, have that discussion, because it saves about 30 to 40% on internet installation, and I think we just missed our opportunity in Brian's Bend. They dropped all the utilities in, but they didn't put conduit in, so they're going to have to go dig in again. And when you have to dig and, and.
Do directional bore.
Do directional boring, is that right now, it's adding about 40% to the cost.
Oh.
Ellen.
I did have a field call from a resident in the Rogers Lake area saying, why aren't they putting the fiber internet down here where they're doing the road projects?
Had a long discussion with.
That would be a perfect time, and it would be more expensive to do later, and I said, well, I think it's kind of late in the game right now.
Two things that they don't understand, and you can send them to me, most of them have called me on it. One, the wireless provider nexus is going out of business at the end of this month. So, they were one of ones that was suggesting dropping conduit in there, and until you have an exact cost and an engineering report as to where it's going to go, there's no way I want to suggest the city putting any money into, to something like that. The advantage in Brian's Bend or any new development is they're digging, because we require utilities being underground, they're already trenching in gas, phone, and electricity.
You're kidding.
All they've got to do is drop in the, in the conduit for the fiber. Then the, if, if we pay for that, or the developer pays for it, whoever owns it can lease that conduit back, and then they just have to run their fiber through it. There's no digging except from the street to the house. So they're saying, typically, they're saying, worst case is 30%, but typically, 40% savings on a project. So if we can put that in ordinance before all these concept plans become reality, the difference in Rogers Lake is we're not ripping up the right-of-way, we're simply redoing the road. And it makes sense to put conduit under the road where it's ripped up, and you don't have to do directional boring. But nobody has a plan or a cost structure that they can present to us. The road project will be done before that happens. Harvig is going to look at Willow Creek, which is Evan and Garnett, and look at where they would, their engineers would cross the road and propose directional, put that in before the road gets completed, so we don't have to directional bore. And they are looking right now at coming in off of Five to Willow Creek, and potentially all the way over to Rogers Lake, if the cost is, is there.
Is it Harvig listed on the website as the person of contact for internet?
Yes.
What's that? Okay. Because I had a resident ask me about it, so it's on the, it's on our, my director, Lori, so she got to the website or whatever.
We've, we've put them on the website, they're in the newsletter, and, because I get a lot of questions, I put CenturyLink, Comcast, Harvig, and Deed, put all their numbers on there, saying, here's the people you have to call.
It's all on the website.
What's the third one?
Deed.
Deed.
Oh, Deed.
Department of Employment and Economic Development, state. That's, they, they're the ones who do the board of order broadband.
Is that been posted on the Nowland, the Nowland sites too?
That I do not know.
I, I have not.
It's, it's in the newsletter, because Lori's got it in hers, and she put, the Mark Kanas' Harvig number in there as well, so.
Is, Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Blake.
Is the newsletter going out now, or are we changing it? I know there were a lot of corrections.
I don't know what happened.
I don't know what's up.
Ellen?
Can you speak to it?
Um, well, I, Lori, we saw the response from Lori about, you know, possibly delaying the, we were going to have to send it to the printer this week, yesterday, Monday, of this year. Um, she said it's on hold at this point.
So what does that mean, cost-wise?
I don't know, depends on what actually, so the deal is, is that the newsletter vendor that's designing the, that has designed it, she is the same designer that designed the one that edited the log, the first time that we changed it, the same designer. And she gave us her grandfather price, $500, to design it again this year, for 12-page stuff. The council has approved a fee schedule for advertisers. Advertisers design their own ads, pay for their own real estate that they want paid, you know, they want in their ad, and so the designer has to work around that. So if we're going to keep it at a 12-six page spread, yes, the articles look like they're squished around the advertising, because that's the only amount of real estate she had to work with. If we want to move to a 16-page spread, then the cost of the newsletter will double, because she has to redesign it. The actual price for a 16-page, you can't, there's nothing between 12-page and 16-page, 12 pages or 16 pages, which is the size of the Ramsey newsletter. And that will involve a larger font, but the more time she touches it, the more expensive it gets, and the more pages you have, the more expensive it gets. Joel knows how to design it. And nobody works for free, and that's how it works.
Well, and, and, you know, probably, since this really requires Lori's input, and it's quarter to 11:00, my comment in, in what I sent back was, I believe, we as a council need to decide what the purpose of the newsletter is, if it's to get communication to our residents, again, if we're talking transparency and openness and communication, I think the articles, the theme should be presented as what we want the articles to represent, and the ads should fit around the articles. A good example would be the, the New York City Magazine is, they put all the ads on the left and the articles on the right. They don't intermix them, so you're trying to fit them around each other. This way, you know what real estate you have for ads, and you can sell that much, and you know what real estate you have for articles, and then you can ask people to give an article of X number of letter, of characters with this general theme. And it, it's worthy of discussion when it's not 11 o'clock at night, what do we intend for the newsletter, what purpose does it serve? How often do we want them out, and how much money do we want to spend?
Mr. Mayor.
And I think that that's probably germane to our budget discussions, what are we willing to spend next year on communication? Is this a valuable communications tool?
I, Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Blake.
I agree with all you're saying, but then that's going to postpone that newsletter into October, right? Because we're not going to meet again for another month.
No, I, I'm saying, not this newsletter. I, I think that, turns out that, it looks like Mary was coming in right after I was on Sunday night. But we said basically the same thing, the font's got to be big enough for people to read. It's, the purpose of this is communication, and I'll tell you what, I, for whatever reason, I get Ramses delivered to my house, and I get a lot of information out of it.
They have more money to work with, too.
Actually, if you, if you take a look at who's doing theirs, between advertising and some of what they're doing, they've actually made some money on it.
Well, that's the purpose of the fee schedule and the advertising, is to help cover those costs. So if we want to move to a 16-page spread, that gives the designer more room to work with everything.
Well, I, I think that it, it, on a night that isn't this late, it's worthy of a discussion. What do we want it to do, what are we willing to pay to get it to do that?
But my question is, is this letter going to go out in September, or are we going to wait till October and decide if we want to change this into a 16-page newsletter and send it out in October?
I, I am not proposing we do that.
Okay.
For this.
So you're saying, you're not.
It sounds like Lori's saying, I'm going to be back next week, leave it until next week, it delays it a week.
But, and do we want to, she's going to need to know what your direction is, are we going to make the font bigger and go to a 16-page spread, or do we leave it as is, what the font says?
Well, and we'll need that information to say.
Like, that's the information.
What's the cost?
The information is, it's $1,000 to go to a 16-page spread and for her to redesign it.
And the current is 500?
Currently, it's 500.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Ringby.
I think this goes to Councilmember Blake's request to have us schedule a meeting on communications. I think a lot of our problems is because there is no, there isn't communication between council and staff, staff to council. And because there isn't, we don't have information. You know, had, had we known that this is the pricing for it, this would be another option, this would be another option, we would know that. And, and I think, as, as, as a council, we want to make sure that whatever we put out to our residents is done, and, and we've talked about it in a professional manner. And to, for me to, to have the thought of a newsletter going out to residents that you can't read, because the font is too small, I, I don't even want my name in it. Well, then, change it this time, let's just change it this time, pay the money. Do we have the money to do that? Yes, we do. It's going to cost more to run the whole thing, right?
$500.
Let's just go to changing it.
And, and I would say, and, and as I put in my notes that you guys saw, I think one of the most important things we have in this newsletter is Joel's illustration of plow. If we're going to get ahead of this, if you take a look at how many people plowed across the road last year, and didn't know what, what Joel illustrated, and, and just happened to approximate to a, a large ad of similar colors, I think that should be either a full page or at least half page with the snowplow requirements listed there, so people can say, oh, I'm doing this wrong. And so if they come knocking on my door, I saw it. And to me, that's one of the most important things, and we kind of buried it.
So, direction back to the team is, make it 16-page, blow up the font, put the snowplow thing on its own page.
Or a half a page.
Or a half a page with the other snowplow.
We have 16 pages to work with, there's, there's a lot of options.
And, and then maybe you can take a look at grouping ads on a page rather than trying to mix them in with the article.
We have to link the designer to perhaps a little bit of freedom.
Yeah, but you can say that that's, we're looking for the articles to be the emphasis.
Well, she could make the priority, if we're going to 16 pages, the priority having the font with the articles to be big, make that first, then follow with the ads, and then there may be holes left over after that.
Should we get this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Ringby.
Also, in one, in my comment, and the one I didn't comment on is, so the pie, the, with, now, maybe it'll be better with a bigger font, but you cannot read what's in the pie, because of the dark numbers. Well, the font will make a huge difference. And then in Lori's column, it's a green background with, again, maybe it's just a small font, but it, that was really hard to read, and we need to make it.
That's why Lori will have to address some of it, because she's got some of her stuff.
Is the final size 11 by 17, is it trimmed down to that?
I don't know that.
Do you guys know when you get it? I haven't gotten one in three years.
It's a regular eight and a half by 11 piece paper. You know what, I haven't gotten one at my house.
I haven't either.
And I, even the time I had, we had the articles, you and I wrote the articles, never got one.
I need to give them my address.
And, no, I never got one.
In an effort to get to the end of the meeting here, so the motion is to move to the 16-page newsletter, and we'll pay the $1,000 that the.
Pay the extra $500.
Extra $500.
So that motion was by Councilmember Ringby?
Yep.
And who was the second?
Linda Blake.
Linda Blake.
Or was that Jason?
Don't care.
It was Jason, wasn't me.
It's 10 to 11, I'm burned out.
All right. So any other discussion on that?
No.
Mr. Mayor, just that we had agreed as a council, we would have both commercial and residential in the.
They are different.
Those are the comments that were submitted, so you get all the corporate, you just need more real estate work.
Yep, that's fine.
Yeah, we just want to make sure it's accurate, because it did look like.
And one, one, kind of last thing on that, I mean, I think the feedback is great, some of the comments, keep it like, give the feedback, and let's, I don't think the staff needs to hear any of the other stuff and some of the comments.
Understood.
Professional.
I want people to be encouraged, especially when we're doing extra work.
When it's 11:30 at night, and it's a Sunday night, and I'm trying to do.
They don't need it, they don't need it.
We're done. So, anything else?
Yes, one final thing.
Wait, is it on the newsletter?
No.
We have to go to the newsletter first. All right, so, all those in favor of the extra $500 and going to 16-page newsletter, so we can get the font size up and fit the ads in appropriately, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. One last thing?
Just an FYI, we're going to issue a building permit for CST up on Highway 47.
Sweet.
They got the river access to 47, they're coming back with an eight-point platform just at one was, and then they're also working on the whole rest of the subdivision, so. just at one lot, and then they're also working on the whole rest of the subdivision, so it's all going forward, but as soon as we see the building come up, we'll know.
All right.
We'll do it, Jern.
We are, Jern.
Nobody had a minute?
No.
Tomorrow's strong coffee network. What do you drink? You just get up on your natural horse juice.
Water in the making or?
Well, then maybe that's why I'm only 5'5", Jason.
There you go. You drink some of the scrawties here.